The school board work session begins in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in two minutes. The school board work session begins in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board work session begins in one minute.
Good morning. I now call the May 5th, 2022 administrative briefing and work session. The Marion County School Board's order at 9:00 a.m. Pepe Cinco de Mayo. Please silence your electronic devices and remove hats to avoid disturbing others. I'm asked the school board's attorney to explain the rules for this work session.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the board clerk. After the board and superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the board clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. We'll now begin today's work session with our administrator, superintendent's administrative briefing.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair, members of the board. Great to see you again this morning. I have just a few items for the briefing, and I'd like to begin with Ms. Barb Dobbins. I'll bring her forward. We were contacted by the Historic Ocala Preservation Society with a potential opportunity to engage in a grant, so I'd like for Ms. Dobbins to present that information to you at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, board members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Prestapino. Thank you for the opportunity to bring this topic to you. Last week, I was contacted by Dr. Leela Curly, who is the president of the Historic Ocala Preservation Society. Dr. Curly was inquiring if the board would be interested in exploring a collaborative grant involving the former district school board building. Here to discuss the details of this request is Dr. Curly.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Dobbins, for that introduction. Thank you, Dr. Gullett, and school board members for having me this morning. We know how much you care about this community and its children, which is why you've chosen to serve in this capacity. I'm going to keep my remarks to three points, provide you with a little information about HOPS, taught you about the local, state, and national significance of the Marion County School Board, otherwise known as Central Elementary, and the partnership and potential funding we are proposing to pursue with the school board to create a space that would continue to meet at least some of the school district's stated needs and save the school district money. So the Historic Ocala Preservation Society was founded in 1980 as a result of the city's proposed plans to widen Sanchez Avenue in order to create four lanes that would connect Silver Springs Avenue to Seventeenth Street. I know it's kind of hard to imagine that such a road would have cut through what we know today as our beautiful southeast historic district neighborhood. But nevertheless, as a result, HOPS was able to protect that historic neighborhood and create three other historic districts thereafter. We believe that Central Elementary, or the old Ocala Primary School, is worthy of restoration for local, state, and national significance. As you know, it was built in 1907. It was one of the very few brick-and-mortar schools to be built in the state, and certainly it was the first in Ocala. It was a product of visionary thinking of early Marion County residents, who in the early 1900s continued to make education the cornerstone to their community after the Seminary of West Florida moved from Ocala to Gainesville and later became known as the University of Florida. Central Elementary was central to the downtown area, but it was also central to this community's core values. After its construction, you then saw the building of the Ocala Junior High School, which is now Eighth Street, which was built in 1914, and the old Ocala High School, which is now presently Osceola Middle School. So clustered together with great foresight, all three schools formed an academic complex within Ocala. At this time, in rural communities throughout America, few individuals had access to elementary school education, much less an academic complex like Ocala's. Yet today, we are privileged to have these three historic school buildings, each over 110 years old, still serving students, faculty, and administrators. I realize that this conversation as to what to do with this building has been years in the making, and unfortunately, no one has stepped up to provide or offer leadership and assistance. But here I am, and here you are, to right the wrongs of poor decisions that were made with this building over 60 years ago. I'm here representing residents of Marion County, both past and present, but individuals throughout the country who are interested in saving this historic neighborhood school from destruction. Let us help you to restore Central Elementary so it can continue to function as a major hub for the education of local children here in Marion County in the 21st century. The site is terrific. It could be a wonderful showstopper for Marion County Public Schools as the first place one sees and thinks of when being introduced to our school system. Be a great place, obviously, to work, being right downtown, where people lunch, shop, and who also now live in surrounding townhomes. There are several grants available for nonprofit organizations and school systems looking to rehabilitate their historic properties, the largest one being the Special Categories Grant, given out by the Florida Bureau of Historic Preservation. This grant can fund up to $500,000. It can be used for exterior and interior purposes. You can have more than one special category grant after you've concluded the first two-year grant period. So you can apply and be rewarded up to, you know, one and a half million dollars in special category grants, not to mention other small grants for historic preservation offered by the state, as well as nonprofit organizations like the Florida Trust for Historic Preservation. Hundreds, a thousand, millions of free dollars that could go a long way to restoring this building back to its original form. So HOPS would like to bring private donors who are also interested in making contributions to this structure, as well as monetary contributions for the construction and restoration, not only of this building, but also the new facilities for the district offices, as a way of preserving this site located in an already highly congested historic neighborhood, and still allow Marion County Public Schools to modernize and update its district offices. So we are asking to, well, we're offering free labor. We would love to go to bat and work on these grants. It would obviously take time, you know, before the grants are awarded, before construction could actually begin. But we are coming out of a pandemic, and so, you know, I think nothing is going to happen immediately, as you know, but I think, again, there's lots of money out there, and we're offering to assist.
Thank you, Ms. Curly. Forward, any comments? Ms. Dora?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Dr. Curly. Thank you so much, first of all, for your phone call of a couple of weeks ago to begin to get this ball rolling. It makes my heart sing to have the community come forward to offer partnership and assistance with us, because in the end, these are our community schools. And it's been said over and over how precious and unavailable construction dollars have become over the years for our schools. So to have the opportunity to preserve and not lose another historic building in Ocala, like the courthouse that we lost previously, lots of beautiful homes along Silver Springs Boulevard, the opportunity to partner and preserve in a fiscally responsible manner is just amazing, amazing. So thank you so much for coming today, and I'm excited and encouraged at what this partnership could bring. And I'm glad that you said that it won't happen tomorrow, because as soon as it hits the news tomorrow, people will be looking for bulldozers, you know? And I'm sure it'll be three to five years before we can pull this all together if we're able to do it. But I'm very open to conversation and very open to doing anything we can. You know, Dr. Gullett, we have our grants department too, and, you know, Renee Singens is brilliant, and if we can get the folks that really know how to put this together on it, then I think that there's fantastic possibilities for this project. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dora. Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you for the presentation. Have we received a hard copy or details on the grant?
Yes, sir. So I forwarded the specific grant guidelines and a copy of the grant application to Ms. Dobbins.
Okay, okay. And Attorney Powers, is that, have you had an opportunity to look at it?
No, sir, it's not.
Okay, all right.
Not need to be. First question you should always ask yourself is whether you can accomplish a job without a lawyer. So far, I don't see anything that requires a lawyer.
Okay. Just the details, for me, the details really matter, you know, long-term. Often, there's obligations associated with money, and I like to know what the obligations are. Have you looked into, I like the idea of preservation, I like it in the private sector, if you can achieve that. Usually, that's the safest and the most valid, because it's their own money. You know, it's just, it just really works. I personally have a, just sort of a bridge to the future. I could see a significant law firm there, for example, that type of thing. Are you able to participate with private enterprise, say, a large law firm that would utilize a historic building like that?
Yeah, so that's a great question. These, the state grant that I've mentioned, the Special Categories Grant, is specifically for nonprofits and public entities. There is no allowance for private enterprise.
Okay. All right, well, yes, as we look into it, my interest would be in that direction of looking for a grant that would accommodate that, because ultimately, I like the idea of preservation, but done in a private format, because it'll go on then forever. It's a beautiful way to operate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. Yes, Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, Dr. Curly, and I appreciate the opportunity, certainly, to look into grant funding, and I think that's something that we need to look at more in a lot of different areas that we work in the school system. I also appreciate the historical significance of this site. With that being said, also understanding, I've come out of the nonprofit sector, and I also understand that grant climate has changed significantly since COVID, and many grants that were historically awarded on a regular basis, lots of dollars flowing, have not been flowing since COVID, honestly, from the folks I know who write grants regularly. So that is a cause of concern for me. Additionally, I have concern knowing that even though you write a grant, it doesn't mean it's awarded. Even if you write a grant for $500,000, it doesn't mean it's rewarded for $500,000. So I appreciate the idea, and I'm similar to Mr. Browning's thoughts on this, that certainly if a grant, and I'll use the Community Development Block grant, for an example, that is a grant that's available to nonprofits, but those nonprofits are obligated throughout the course of 20, 30 years or more, that they must be occupying that space and do not have the ability to, you know, change ownership, for example. And so while we, as a board, may consider this as an option, and we may want to potentially stay in that location for the end of time, I don't know that I'm comfortable right now, today, saying that, yes, let's move forward, let's make that happen, knowing that that grant, potential grant money, could tie our hands, saying that we would never have the ability to potentially change ownership of that property. And I definitely appreciate the historical significance and think that building needs to stay as a building, but I don't know that this board has determined if we, in fact, are going to go and be a part of that building again. There's a lot to be done, certainly $500,000 would help, but we know, based on the engineering information that we heard from the gentleman that spoke with us, when we were in that building, remember, nobody's been in that building since December, when we were in that building and heard that report and basically vacated within a couple of weeks, soon as we got that report, we understand that it needs to be taken down on the inside, down to the bare walls. That's a significant amount of money just for the interior demolition, and I dare say it's well over $500,000 for what all needs to be done on the inside before we can even start constructing what could be done on the inside. So I appreciate it, I certainly do, and thank you for stepping forward. We want more community support, we want more folks engaged with us in figuring out how we can bring private money and nonprofit money and grant money into the district so we can do and fund some of these construction projects that we have coming forward, but this board member is not comfortable in saying today, yes, let's move forward with this opportunity.
I guess it's a question of what kind of steward or stewardship does the school board in the Marion County Public School System want to be? Of public funds, of public properties, of underutilized properties, of properties that are needing renovation, needing serious maintenance? So I think that's the first question. Do you want to keep the building or do you not? Then that, I think, defines what direction you go in. Do you sell it so that a private investor can move in and restore the building? Or do you, you know, take advantage of these opportunities and at least attempt to obtain some grant money to see if you can creatively reutilize this space in a way that you may not have thought about yet?
So, Dr. Curly, I appreciate that for sure, and I think the point that you've made is exactly the point I'm making. We are being stewards of the taxpayer money, because we are not jumping at an opportunity just because it's in front of us today. So I think that we have a lot that we need to take into consideration. We appreciate this right now, but I think we need to have, you know, one of those bring it back to the board conversations and determine. We haven't talked about a district administrative office in months. Obviously, we've relocated here, we've relocated a lot of people here, but we have lots of other issues right now, school overcrowding, making sure that we're impacting student success ahead of an administrative building at this juncture. That's how I feel about this, at this juncture. So right now, I'm content with that building sitting unoccupied and us waiting a bit to determine what we're going to do with it, but that's just this board member's position.
Well, and I guess what I'm proposing is, as you're waiting, you know, could we potentially move forward in partnership with you to see what grant funding possibilities or options are out there for, for the building? And you're right, according to the Special Category Grant, the school system would have to hold onto the property for 20 years before it could divest itself of the property. Again, you know, is this, is this property important enough to the school system to want to retain it in conjunction with that original academic complex that was founded over 110 years ago? And clearly, it's not big enough for school district offices, but again, it could be used for magnet fair expositions and other events that the Marion County Public School outsources, it could be used for tutoring of the students at Osceola and Eighth Street Elementary. I mean, there's numerous possibilities. So I'm coming to you, you know, asking to move forward on this particular front, and as you said, it may not, you know, bear any fruit, but at least we tried.
Dr. Curly, I want to thank you for coming forward this morning. The reason I'm thanking you is because we did move out of the building back in December, and since that time, we have not, as a board, had a discussion about any plans. We talked about some things prior to us finding out the report on that building, and I do think that conversation does have to go forward. So this, I don't feel that your coming here has fallen on deaf ears, because what it does is at least make sure that we have this conversation. We do need to make a decision. We can't just let the building sit there, because the longer it sits there unoccupied, buildings that sit unoccupied end up dissolving or dilapidating, becoming a ruin. So we will be having a conversation. This sparks the conversation. I do have a question about the grant, and you just answered one part of it. You said that it would require us to maintain ownership for 20 years. Is there any matching that we would have to do to this grant? Does the district have to match? You said $500,000, so if they get the grant for $500,000, do the district has to match $500,000?
Yes, so that is a great question, and there is a one-to-one match. So $500,000 would have to match. That match could be cash, that match could be in-kind contributions, irrevocable pledges. That is something that could come from the school board, that is something that, you know, HOPS could facilitate from private individuals and businesses, donors who are interested in helping to preserve the building.
And I asked that specific question for one reason, because I know, and I don't know if the other board members may know this, but I'm sure they've done their research. Several years ago, we did a renovation of Eighth Street Elementary, and that required some matching funds, and I think we ended up doing more the district, if I'm not correct. Ms. Boston knows this here. I think we probably paid more than the grant, actual grant, or something to the effect, and we ended up on the short end of the stick. So if we were to go forward with something like this, I want to make sure that it would be done equitably, equitably, and that we get the benefits of it, of a grant of such.
Absolutely, and there's a lot of interest in the community, so I just want to put that out there as to whether or not Marion County Public Schools decides to hold onto the building and, again, use it as a flagship for the school system, or whether or not it sells the building. We want to make sure that the building itself is preserved first and foremost.
Is there a certain time limit on this? Let me ask that question as well.
A time limit? So the application process for this current year is April 1st to June 1st. So we're kind of, you know, coming towards the end of the application deadline. I think in order to be effective in our grant application process, we might want to actually just start working on this with the hopes of, not the hopes, with a plan of submitting April 1st of 2023. However, I have myself filled out some parts of the application. I just need the support of the school board to move forward with a concurrence letter and some supporting materials from, you know, the school district, as well as some community leaders, city councilors, county commissioners, city officials.
So at the awarding of this grant, we would be locked in to holding this property for 20 years?
Well, I mean, locked in is one way you could put it, or, you know, happily, you know, the property owner of this, you know, what will, you know, hopefully be, like I said, a beautiful mark, right, of the core values of this community, which was, you know, has been and is education.
Yes. I would, just sort of adding to the comments, if you continued your efforts, because you are out in the community and you understand the community, especially the historic perspective, think of this as we head toward the future. Dollars really matter here as we build, as the chairman indicated. We are looking to make some moves as we go form a building performance for a potential build-out of some sort. If it were, let's just say hypothetically, if there was a grant that you were able to find that tied into private enterprise and met the criteria, think about the historic nature of maintaining the building, moving on with private enterprise. We would get the money for selling the building and then be able to apply that if, in fact, we build a educational hub of some sort at some location. So all of those things are in the flow, so it's not like standing water, you know, you're like stepping into the Colorado River here. Things are moving, you know, there's action, and money is the big issue, so we need to have money coming toward us that we can use to build rather than going away.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's what we're offering Marion County Public Schools, is to go to bat and find those grants, whether it is for private investors to then invest as you sell the building so that they can apply for these grants, or whether you decide to hold onto the building and use it for your school board offices or for the, you know, other purposes. But it's going to be a win-win situation either way. You're going to be able to save money for your new district offices, wherever they go, by restoring this building or selling the building, allowing someone else to restore it.
Okay, well, just so I'm come across clear, I'm not in favor of that particular proposal you're making. However, I am open to ideas, further research, that type of thing. However, I am open to ideas, further research, that type of thing, because, you know, it's just a, it's just a positive thing. This is a community, and our goal is to educate, and we need money to do it. If you sell a building, sold many buildings, you get the proceeds, you go do something else with them and maybe a, a more positive location, for example. So that way you preserve, plus you take those funds and you can move forward. So it's just some, some general thought to you, so you don't go off in a direction thinking you have a mandate or something. I mean, that's my thought, and I'm just one board member in, in the picture.
No, I appreciate that, and we're looking at all options.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Ms. Campbell.
And are, are we aware, maybe Dr. Gullett or Dr. Curley, if, if this site is actually on the National Register of Historical Places?
It is a contributing structure to the National Register of Historic Places.
So does that additionally open us up to potential federal grants?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
That's a great question.
Dr. Curley, yeah, I, I just take me a minute. Thank you for coming before us. You see a problem and you're bringing a solution. And as a board member and a community member, I appreciate and I thank that because oftentimes this board is notorious for standing still and not doing any movement on anything. We're 10, 15, 20 years down the road, and our buildings are falling apart, and they're unreparable, they become dangerous, there are eyesores, people break into them. I mean, numerous reasons why a building should not be standing alone. So I think I've heard my, the, the board today, and I, they don't know what direction they want to go. I think this board needs to have serious discussion. Is, do we want to repair this building, fix it and continue to use it, or do we want to sell it? And this board, some of us have been here longer than others, haven't been able to make a decision for years. But I think we're at a time. We're at that fork. We need to make a decision. And rather than push it down farther and farther down the road, for whatever reasons, we never, don't want to make those hard, tough decisions, I think right now is a perfect time for us to decide what we want to do. And I love that we have opportunity, you know, to either preserve it. We have a, a, a community that wants to back this up where we don't. And those are my thoughts and my opinions on that. So thank you so much.
I'm in agreement too, Ms. King, that we have to have that conversation.
We do.
And we can't have it too far down the road. It needs to be coming up immediately, as soon as possible, to discuss. Because I said, as long as that building sits there unoccupied, it's just going to go to ruins.
Correct. And it's, and, and that is growing down there. It's beautiful, you know, around there. And to see an old school building that is falling apart because we have a board that is stagnant and want, not wanting to make tough decisions doesn't set well with me. So personally, I would like to see a board make a decision.
Agreed. I, I believe we need to put this on a work session agenda upcoming for certain. I know that we have the May 19th work session coming up that's going to be talking more about growth and where we're putting our students. So that's top of mind for me, but I completely agree. We're about to have a central warehouse located downtown that's going to be vacant before too long. There's actually another piece of property across the street from that that we also own that I just learned yesterday. So there, there's a, there's a much greater conversation about our downtown footprint that we need to have. So I recommend we put it on a work session, potentially the first one in June. I'm not sure which one we have upcoming that has some space.
I have a question, though. Can she move forward with this grant? I heard April, between April and June, can you move forward with this grant with us not necessarily deciding what way, like, if we get the grant, like, how would that work?
That's a great question. So yes, I can move forward with a grant. I would have to have a concurrence letter from the property owner, and I would need access to some documents to provide for supporting materials. Everything else would be filled out, and I would be happy to work in conjunction with whoever is in your, your grant department to, to make that happen.
Dr. Curley, by allowing you to move forward, that doesn't lock us into any-
Yes, it does. Yes, it does. She, I believe she said April 1st of 2023 would be a little bit better timing, if I'm not mistaken. Did I, did I misinterpret that?
Right, and that's the second cycle. Obviously, that's next year's application window when it opens. But I don't believe that if you apply for the grant, you have to accept it. Once you accept the grant, that locks you in.
Right, because I don't want to just hold us, because again, we're notorious for staying stagnant and never wanting to address issues that are coming before us. And we spend, we sit on this board many, many, many hours, you know, and I agree, putting our students, that's first, but they stay a little longer and address this concern too.
But by, from what I'm hearing, from what I'm hearing, by allowing you to move forward, it doesn't lock us in. It also just gives us another option.
It does.
Thank you.
I would have a tendency to disagree, and I would say that a concurrence letter would be premature at this point. And if staff wants to generate such a concurrence letter and have it review, reviewed by the board, that would be an important thing because concurrence letters and letters of intent can mean anything. When it's specific to a lease, that's, that's a different matter. But I would strongly encourage that if they wish to, if, if HOPS or staff wish to generate or work together on such a, such a letter and then present it to the board to review, that's within their purview to do so. But that would be the time at which you would need a lawyer to review whatever it is that you got. But the board needs to see it, not just the lawyer look at it and decide whether it's okay. I mean, it's something the board needs to look at and see what you're locking yourself into.
Right.
Absolutely.
Chair.
Ms. Thoreau.
Thank you. There is a tremendous appetite in the community to preserve this building, and it's important. I've also witnessed the great work that HOPS has done over the years, taking buildings that were in a shambles and rehabbing them. And some of them have, quite a few of them, I think, have gone to, to private entities, but it has restored downtown O'Callaghan. You know, I've, I've lived here long enough when it wasn't like that, and it was pretty scary, and all these beautiful buildings, and I couldn't help but think, surely there's a better way. So that's what I'm really keeping in the front of my mind. And, and also, yes, we are very busy. We have a ton going on. We have had to move swiftly and be responsive in, in, in many different ways. But, but this particular decision has had a lot of twists and turns for a lot of different reasons. I 100% support researching grants, hopefully having them be awarded without the strings that we would actually have to accept it. Because of our fiscal position, we really need to know that anything that we jump into is going to be fiscally responsible and, and cover those bases. I also don't want staff, you know, taking the time to go down a rabbit hole, you know, doing it just to do it. I think that if, in good faith, we dive in with you and see what we can pull together as far as funding, and then when we have the, the, and obviously the, the letter, and then making sure that we're not committing ourselves too soon prematurely, so that we have a package, so to speak. Okay, this is the preservational package and opportunity. And then that will give me the ability to make a, a final decision. You're just here with us today to make an offer and, and to let us know is what I'm getting from this. So I say rock on.
Chair Cummings, if I may.
Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, if I may, could we have Ms. Dobbins come forward? She is the staff member who received the grant. Pardon me. And I want to make sure that because she has had the time to review it, that she has the opportunity to provide any additional insight in determination of what the grant would entail of us, if, if that's allowable. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Gullett. Yes, and I, I did review the grant. I, I want to provide information so you, as a board, can make a, a sound decision. This grant does have, if we enter into this grant, it does have the 20-year where we could not change ownership. It also speaks to that the funding through the grant can only be for structural and exterior work. As you know, based on the moisture impact report that we reviewed in December, there is significant repair to that building. When we look at making that building a safe and healthy building, we're talking about a minimum of probably about $4.5 million. If we enter into the grant, we would then have the 500,000, if, up to 500,000, to Ms. Campbell's point. They could come back and say, we're going to give you 100,000. Whatever that dollar amount, we would have to match it, whether in-kind or with, with cash. When we match that, there are restrictions to what the matching dollars can go for. Part of the matching dollars cannot go for ADA compliance. As you know, being a historic building, if we go into renovating, remodeling the building, we have to bring it up to code, which is a significant amount of cost. So bringing it up to ADA code, bringing it, the ADA restrooms, an elevator, those things right there are going to cost you $450,000 minimum. And the grant nor the matching dollars go toward the match. So in other words, that half a mil, almost half a million dollars would be outside of our matching to, to the monies received. So that, of course, is, is concerning. The other part is if we receive the grant, we only have two years to spend the dollars. If you think about the time we're in right now, we have, we would have to acquire the contractors, the architectures, and then the materials and so forth. I'm not saying it's not doable. From a professional opinion, I worry about timing right now. I would, I personally, professionally would be more apt to look at the 2023 grant cycle versus jumping into something so quickly. But again, this operational crew stands ready to, to do what we need to do. I just felt like you needed to have a, a more information so you can make that sound decision.
I, may I ask a couple of questions? I, my questions are, is if we do wait, like, what is it costing us to maintain that bu- building now? Insurance, we still have insurance. Is it still air-conditioned? You know, all, what does that encompass? I also have questions of the projected cost. Should we wait? If we repair and fix this now, you mentioned 4.5 million. What is that going to look like projected? And I know we can't tell, but I can look at what's happening in the times now, and I can just even look back, like the Reddick gem, you know, something that would have, when it first happened and we, if we would have took it down sooner, it would have cost a whole lot less. I think it started off maybe 100,000. A few years later, we're looking at 500,000. So what would be the projected cost for the future board, you know, to fix that building in the future? And so my other question is like a risk management problem. If that building's empty, someone goes in, they get injured, unfortunately, it's bad and foreseen circumstances happen, what is the liability and what would that cost the board then too? So as those are great big numbers, I'm trying to look at the larger picture of what caught, you know what I mean, sometimes. So I just have a few of those questions moving forward too.
And those are great questions, and if I could answer a couple of them to, so the building does not deteriorate, we are continuing to run the air because if we turn the air off, that, that mold issue is going to-
Right. So I'm curious, like, what, what are those costing? You don't have to, I'm not, I know you don't know that right now. But I think if we're looking at one part, like, let's look at the whole grand picture and scope and have the whole view, in my opinion, rather than just focusing on, this is going to cost us and this is what it looks like right now. Like, really, what's the big and, and grand picture? But that's just me.
Thinking about the restrictions on the, the grant for, for, for outdoor and, and exterior, I'm thinking along your lines, Board Member King, in terms of being able to shore it up, you know. If we're able to get some grant funding to, to, my understanding is all the bricks need to be remortared, you know, the roof needs to be replaced. Any project like this takes a lot of time. But if we start now by at least knowing what grant options are and make a choice then whether or not to accept them, in my mind, thinking about what you just said, we could at least get the ball rolling, get it shored up, prevent any further damage while we're working on the rest of it. And thinking in terms of 20 years, gosh, that sounds like such a long time. Well, 20 years goes by in a blink, and if we end up bringing it up to code, modernizing it while still preserving the historic nature, surely that's going to make it much more marketable in, in the future. And that's putting the cart ahead of the horse. I, I was just responding to the thought process that, that you have, Board Member King, and I think it's really valid considering what we've experienced with the Reddick property, that if we can get some grant funding to shore it up now while we're working on the rest of it and, and partner up with, with the community on this, I think it would be a, a win. We have looked at buildings, raw land. We've been looking at this since before I came on the board, and this is my fourth year. And there's been a reason why we haven't done anything. And, and I think it's because we just haven't found the right option. And it is amazing sometimes when you circle back around, and maybe the answer was always in your own backyard anyway. So while we're even thinking about making a decision about this building, to me, it's worth it to find out about what our options would be to definitely prevent further damage, to bring it up to code, and then, you know, see what possibilities there are. You know, and in my head, I'm thinking, okay, so maybe we're able to repurpose the Central Elementary just for board meetings. And, you know, that it'll all be configured that way and, and be intimate, but also able to accommodate more people. And then we can look at building a two-story building behind it for our offices. You know, something's going to happen, have to happen with this property too, and the community is very committed to continuing our career in technical education. MTI has become known and loved. This building has a lot of problems too, which is exactly why the new, now older Forest was built. I mean, multiple boards over multiple years were told that even this complex was going to be very, very expensive to try to, to renovate and, and not safe for kids. And, and to me, that was the incentive to build the, the Forest High School where it is now. So, you know, there's, there's so much to this, and, and there's a lot of dollar signs attached. But I think it's important for the community to understand that, you know, it's not about having some big flashy building with offices for board members. It is about creating something in the community that we can all be proud of, that we can all have access to, that honors our, our history in a fiscally responsible manner. That's where it begins and ends for me.
Ms. Vrani.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I, I'm excited. When I came on the board, I'm excited that for this discussion to be taking place. When I came on the board, there was a, a rather singular consideration of, of building, building out at a location at the, at the old, at the old location where we were and what we're talking about today. And at the time, I had asked at, like, for a solid 90-day performance-style study of going forward because often organizations can be, can be thinking about things and making efforts five, 10, 15, 20 years. And, and times change as you go along. And so I had asked for a solid 90 days, and I'd like that, and I, I'd like to see that take place with some solid workshops. I'm encouraged to hear the board thinking in, in those terms about a bridge to the future. Personally, I always look at about 10 options on big money. And when you get up over 10 million, 20 million, 30, at the time, I believe that was in the 40, 40-plus million-dollar range. If you have or at least five locations, and I'm very, very encouraged by the thought that went into the need for a building, for a complex, and also the opportunity we have in this county for open space, very much, I'd like to use a model of the sheriff's office where there's enough room to expand as- to use a model of the sheriff's office, where there's enough room to expand as things go along. I believe, I've looked at a few properties, just in a very general sense, in between the Ocala area going out five miles toward Bellevue, this beautiful open land, beautiful terrain, we could have a very positive, going forward, 50-year educational tech complex that could very likely pay for itself with further development as time goes on from folks around the world. We're in a very central position. So I love, I love what I'm hearing here today, and I would encourage us to target, perhaps this summer, just target the top five locations, and then the top five ways of going forward. Times have changed, even within, like, take Apple, for example, even within organizations, meetings are now held by top staff within the same building by electronic device, rather than everybody moving into a central room in the old-fashioned way. So there's just so many neat opportunities to go forward and to think about that, think about how we might do it. And I know a lot of that would fall on you, Ms. Dobbins, in terms of all that effort, but saving everything you've done, everything you can scavenge, scavenge from the past, and then we build a plan, a bridge to the future, and just be as effective as we can be.
Thank you, Ms. King.
Yeah, I'm just going to say, the idea of looking at other properties is not new. We do have a new board member sitting here. This past board, for years, has been looking at other properties. I'm sure Mr. Knight could speak to you, Mr. Browning, about the different areas throughout the county that we've looked at, and it is kind of difficult when you're trying to find the perfect location and spot for our district, and that's what I was talking about. This board has laid stagnant for years and years for that building, and now we have a building that is closed and empty and sitting. I think our conversation for our board, maybe whenever June or whatever we decided to do, we need to seriously decide, do we preserve the building? We have a great option, or are we going to sell it? That's just me, one board speaking, board member speaking, but this is not a new issue. It is very, very, very old. I think we're at a crossroads, and it's, I know it's difficult, and it's not fun to make these tough decisions, but I would encourage this board to seriously consider it, looking for the future too, and the dollars, being fiscally responsible, looking after our community. I think have many reasons why this needs to be addressed and not kick it down any farther. Thank you.
Superintendent, I want to suggest that we kind of move to get this on an agenda work session as soon as possible. I think there's some community support, and again, I thank Dr. Curly for bringing that forward, but we can't, you're right, Ms. King, we can't keep kicking it down the road. We need to do something and make a decision. Hopefully, preferably, it will be the right decision, but we need to make a decision. And we love the historical nature of that building and that neighborhood, that community as well, but we do have a footprint. We have a, Marion County School District has a huge footprint down there in that area. We need to figure out how is that footprint going to look.
Chair, is it appropriate to add it to the May 19th work session? I mean, while we're talking about development in our entire county, talk about our own development?
What's, Ms. Pressutino, where are we at on that agenda for the 19th? Is it long, long, or?
I mean, that's going to be an extensive conversation, but.
There's currently three topics: self-funded health plan, Achieve 2026 strategic plan, goal update five, impact of growth in Marion County.
I think we can add it on to that one.
Mm-hmm.
And move it along and have some serious consideration and some actual, not just talk, but some movement.
Sure. While we're talking about the growth in Marion County and what we need to do for students and what we need to do for schools, et cetera, let's talk about what we need to do for our own properties.
Right, right. Doesn't really give us an answer for today, though.
No.
As far as providing any direction.
But it is ahead of June 1st.
Yeah, I think this is just an informational presentation for today. I don't think any action needs to take place personally. But I would like to, on the idea of a workshop, I'd like to, I'd like to see a, I'm going to say three minimum, because this is a big project, and so that we can process some information.
You say three minimum?
Three workshops, minimum. And the reason I say that, okay, let me just elaborate, because I don't want to sound like I'm overcomplicating, but once you get into something this large, and I know I'm constantly referred to as the new guy, but I'm not really that new. I'm probably the oldest guy here. So, and I've probably built more buildings than anyone on this board. And the idea of making a major step forward for this community is a big deal. It's a huge deal. And I would never, in the private world, financing would not allow it. For example, financing is a big issue. All of the considerations that are involved have to be thought through, and then we must request effort by staff to look at what we generate as a board in our ideas. So what comes out of number one, and then we work toward number two, then we work toward number three, that's the way you really get something done, rather than just, okay, we're having a meeting, boom, 50 years going forward. And I understand, I understand, I understand consideration that we've been around a long time, thinking about things. That's always the case, no matter what. It's always the case that you're thinking about things for a long time. The market changes, things come available, ideas change. COVID was a big deal. The world has changed. We must sit, relax, ask staff for information. We must develop this thing in a very business-like way. And I'm not saying it hasn't been in the past, but that's my thought. I would like to see at least three, if not a little bit more. This is a major project, probably the major project of the decade.
Ms. King.
Yeah, there was no direct thing saying about how long you've been here or not. When, this board has been discussing this for years, probably at least six years, seven years that I'm aware of, this is not a rash decision, it's just decision time. So we, as a board, talking about sitting back and relaxing, this board has sat and relaxed for many, many, many years, you know? I mean, we still may continue that. I'm just saying, this board member personally thinks it's time to really get all our information and make a decision. Do we repair the building? Do we use a perfect, wonderful asset that has come before us? Or do we sell it? Or do we sit and then we leave this for the next board, you know, to try to figure out what to do? You know, that's my, that's my only point that was made. Thank you.
Ms. Dobbins, and I know we have some public comment on this issue, so we will allow the public comment. So, Ms. Dobbins.
Yes, if I could just clarify, so Dr. Curly seems to have a view on the application that the, was it the structural? The structural and stuff only applies for religious buildings. That is throughout the grant, so we'll need more time to vet that portion of it. But I do know that she will need the board's direction on whether we do the letter of interest, because that would need to come, from my understanding, to the board by the May, the last May meeting, so she has time to submit it for the June 1st deadline. So.
So the decision.
So Eric Kais, who is the grant supervisor at the Florida Bureau of Historic Preservation, I spoke with him after I spoke with Ms. Dobbins about her concerns as to the funding and the restrictions. The funding is for interior and exterior, and of course, the building has to be ADA compliant, but that does not mean it needs an elevator, just needs to be able to provide access to individuals with disabilities, but he says there is lenience on that. So I would encourage Ms. Dobbins to, you know, share the guidelines of this special categories grant with the board so that you can review it for yourself, and also the contact information for the grant supervisor, who can give you more detailed information than I can.
Thank you, Dr. Curly. We have some public comment? Ms. Osley?
Yeah, so I appreciate it, board. I'm not here representing Osley Construction, as I was the other night when we were doing our partnership, but I'm here actually representing the school board of small private school, Ambleside School of Ocala. We would potentially have interest in that facility and restoring it to its original nature as a schoolhouse. There's a lot of work that would have to be done. Now, we are not-for-profit, and we are a religious school, so I don't know if we would fall under some of those potential guidelines that could be helpful. So we're open, excuse me, to exploring that. I don't know if under a letter of intent for sale or under anything, we could explore that grant on behalf of Ambleside School of Ocala, but we would have interest in potentially doing that. We're still looking for additional space in the downtown core, and we're a school, so we've seen the pictures that Hops has posted of what a Central Elementary used to look like, and I would love for it to look exactly like that again. So that's something we're opening with discussion with this board and with everyone else. I know there's significant things that we would have to look at, and I've reached out to Mr. Knight to begin to explore those, but I wanted to at least throw that out as a possibility. So I don't know if the grant request could come from us potentially, if we were under some sort of letter of intent, but that's just a possibility I wanted to throw out.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbins. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, I, I understand, I really appreciate the timeliness of that, of your comments, because it gives, it gives the impetus to interest from the community, and that's a home run for me. I know you have extensive, probably some premier construction knowledge in our community, and that's what, exactly what I'm talking about. So I really appreciate you coming on the record. I would encourage you pursue your interests highly. Of course, you're in competition with everyone. These are all valuable things, but thank you for stepping forward with those timely comments.
Thank you. Any other public comment, Ms. Pressutino?
Ms. Angel?
No, no, not on that issue, no, thank you.
Any other public comment in regards to the old school board building? There being none, thank you. We're going to move forward.
What are we going to do?
Add it to May 19th.
May 19th?
May 19th work session.
Okay.
Yes, for discussion and serious consideration on making a decision about what we're going to do. Are we selling? Are we restoring? Are we, whatever we're going to do, we need to be coming forward with it. Be honest with you, I'm just personally kind of tired of kicking it, kicking things down the road, and we need to make some decisions, some tough calls.
I think the new forest opened in 2005, so these conversations and gyrations have been going on for over 17 years, and there's nothing wrong with that. It's just because there's so many legs to it. So I just think it's also important for the community to understand that maybe the reason why it's taken so long is because it is so important, and there's so much connected to it.
Right. Thank you, guys, for coming. Thank you, Dr. Curly. Moving forward, we're going to have our, I'm sorry, Superintendent, you have any further things?
I do, thank you, Chair, members of the board. I know we have a full agenda. I do want to share one other item, think it's important, and I think you'll be glad to hear this. I received a letter within the last week that I'd like to just read to you. It's very brief, and it's great news. I received a letter from the chairman of the African-American History Task Force, Chair Tony Hill, and essentially, he says, "The members of the Commissioner of Education's African-American History Task Force concluded a voting on April 13th of 2022 to extend the designation to your district. We applaud your board's determination and commitment to bringing awareness to the students and the community you serve. Please find Marion County Public Schools Certificate for exemplary status attached to this email." And he concludes by saying, "Thank you" on behalf of the members. So we have received a certificate of exemplary status, and I just wanted to say, "Thank you, board."
Thank you. That is a huge accomplishment, because I think that makes us the 10th district, either the 10th or the 11th district in the state, to have achieved this out of 67 school districts. And I had talked, former Senator Tony Hill, who's my frat brother, and he had already congratulated us on this wonderful accomplishment, and I want to thank this board, because this was one of the endeavors that we started prior to the pandemic, and it continued throughout the pandemic, and Ms. Barber and her team and all those that worked on it, and the community input was instrumental in making sure that Marion County was not one of the last. And it actually, it's a mandate, it was a law, that some of these things should be done, and yet, we're the 10th district to do it. So shout out to Marion County for that.
Yes, and I'll, perfect timing, I have comments later today in reference to this with the Stanton Wearsdale project that we're all considering. It is, it is the 65th anniversary of that school, and from many issues, from many angles, we're going to be able to bring that up to modern times, and we have that opportunity right, right here, right now. So that would blend beautifully into Mr. Hill's comments, award of status. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brownie. Anything else, Superintendent?
Thank you.
All right. We worked that first hour. We're going to move forward with Achieve 2026 strategic plan update from our CFO, Ms. Bosadales, Operation Emergency Management Executive Director, Ms. Dobbins.
Good morning again. I'm honored to be here today with the representatives from Business Services, Technology and Information Services, Transportation, Facilities, Technical Services, Food and Nutrition Services, and Purchasing. We are operations, the behind-the-scenes crew that provides the infrastructure, resources, and support so that teachers, students, and staff have a safe, healthy, positive working and learning environment. We are here to discuss our portion of the strategic plan with you and how the work surrounding this goal positively impacts student success. As you can see, this is the strategic plan at a glance with all five goals. We are goal four, we are fiscal and operational efficiency. Our overarching goal is to ensure that our operational effectiveness and efficiency of resources are aligned with our strategic priorities. To make sure that we meet our goal, we have to identify, we have identified six priority strategies. To ensure fiscal and operational efficiency, we must enhance the use of technology for improved efficiency and effective instruction across the district. We must provide reliable and safe bus transportation. We must ensure facilities are healthy and safe physical environments for working and learning. We must expand wellness and nutritional education to improve academic performance and behavior by supporting students and making healthy food choices. We must increase efficiency in the procurement of goods and services, and we must provide financial stability, sound fiscal management, and operational efficiency. These strategies touch all employees and all students and interact synergistically to positively impact employee and student success. Now here to discuss our priority strategy A is our Director of Technology and Information Services, Mr. Carrillo. is our Director of Technology and Information Services, Mr. Carrillo.
Good morning. For priority strategy 4A from the Achieve 2026 MCPS Strategic Plan, I will be walking you through the key activities from technology along with Ms. Kim Newport and Mr. Chris Humans. These key activities will help us drive and ultimately accomplish our main strategy, which is to enhance the use of technology for improved efficiency and effective instruction across the district. And for goal 4A, the outcome metric we will use is to improve student access to devices and bandwidth, achieving one-to-one with Chromebooks from 90% in 2021 to 100% by 2026. And the key indicator for this metric is to increase the number of student take-home devices, which includes Chromebooks and hotspots. We are now going to discuss our key activities to accomplish our priority strategy, which is to enhance the use of technology for improved efficiency and effective instruction across the district. Key activity number one is to develop a digital master plan that identifies the needs and opportunities to strengthen technology across the district. And this means promoting the effective use of technology by addressing the educational technology needs of our students, which will result in improved learning opportunities, interactions, and instruction. Effective technology can be utilized to manage and track ongoing progress along with data points. Our mission is to ensure students' technology hardware needs are met by providing connectivity and increasing access to tools for learning. The Technology Department is committed to excellence in providing equitable, sustainable, and innovative technology for our students and our staff. And to help us achieve this goal, we are establishing a steering committee that will include school-based leaders and district leadership to work with us in advisory capacity. And the mission of the IT Steering Committee, the Instructional Technology Committee, will be to focus on the evolution of our technology by doing the following. A, develop strategies that identify technology needs and opportunities to strengthen technology across our schools and departments. B, explore innovative technologies and resources to expand digital opportunities for engagement and learning. And C, outline training and support needed for educators on how to utilize technology for high-quality instruction. The IT Steering Committee, along with our Technology Coordinator, will serve as a guide for the creation and development of our digital master plan. And for key activity two, I will turn it to Technology Program Specialist, Mr. Chris Humans. Thank you.
Good morning. All right, key activity number two, explore innovative technologies and resource to expand digital opportunities for student engagement and learning. One of the first points is in exploring new technologies and tools. We must first assess what we currently utilize across the district. Part of that plan is to complete an inventory of all the applications and tools used across the district. Part of this inventory will assess their functionality, highlighting any redundancies in an effort to streamline all of our offerings to enhance available technical support and to reduce costs. Our current technology applications, are they still meeting our needs? Are they becoming aged and outdated? Are they nearing the end of life? By assessing replacement technology, we gain an opportunity to provide features that current solutions may be lacking. Some of those solutions, the features, would be analytics to better service our staff, students, and parents, and provide ease of access to information. Two of the priority applications that need to be replaced, number one would be Stoneware, the application that drives the MCPS desktop. It's reaching its end of life. Replacing Stoneware will provide easier access to tools, applications, and information to the students and staff. Key features in the replacement would be enhanced analytics and a similar user interface with very little outward change. We're currently implementing ClassLink as a replacement for Stoneware. Our second priority application that needs replaced is the BMS Tracket system. And this is our technology ticketing system. Replacing this allows for enhanced prioritization of work order tickets, which will lead to faster response times to critical issues and better tracking and enhanced analytics to avoid issues that will come up. Another high priority is the Digital Master Plan, is implementing a data dashboard to provide easier access to student data. This goal is already being implemented. When it becomes live, it will become a single source of truth when tracking student achievement data. The Technology Department continues to attend conferences such as FETC, which is the Future Education Technology Conference. This provides us the opportunity to meet with current vendors and to meet new vendors, discover the latest innovations. And also, we are looking at reintroducing the day of technology, which in the past provided an opportunity for teachers and staff to explore our current resources and tools, attend seminars, and to meet with experts from the vendors to get their questions answered. So all of these different tools will help enhance key activity number two, which is to explore the innovative technologies and resources. Next up, I will introduce Kim Newport, is our technology resource teacher, to discuss key activity number three.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Key activity three, provide training and support on how to utilize technology to improve high-quality instruction. We provide direct instruction to classroom teachers in the use of engaged classroom technology, including interactive flat panels and document cameras. This support is available for all teachers upon request throughout the school year. We will continue to coordinate with the Professional Leadership and Learning Department to expand training and support of classroom use of Canvas and Canvas Studio. Focusing on improved communication and efficiency at the school and department level, we will reintroduce our series of professional learning opportunities that includes training for school and department webmasters, as well as SharePoint site owners to ensure those staff members have the tools and knowledge necessary to effectively maintain their individual sites to meet the needs of all stakeholders. We are also reintroducing our series of Microsoft Office application trainings targeted at clerical staff with the goal of increased productivity and efficiency. Data mining and advanced Excel training are offered for school administrators to assist with data collection and analysis. We will expand our self-paced training opportunities available by adding additional courses in Canvas, as well as expanding our video library and knowledge base FAQ. And now, our Director of Transportation, Ms. Rebecca Aurora, will come and discuss strategy B.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Under Achieve 2026 Strategic Plan, I will walk you through strategy B for B, ensure reliable and safe bus transportation. The purpose of this strategy is to identify and strengthen areas of deficiency to ensure that transportation by bus for all students is efficient, reliable, and safe. We are striving and will continue to improve the average daily bus driver attendance from 85% in 2021 to 100% by 2026. Under key activity number one, we're exploring ways to recruit and retain bus drivers. This is an ongoing, never-ending task to ensure that we have and meet the critical need in securing the most qualified to fill these vacancies. Some of the things that we've done thus far is our bus blitz, where we go out into the community and meet candidates in their environment. Not only meet them, but allow them the opportunity to sign on and fulfill applications, not complete applications, there on the spot. We've participated in numerous job fairs. We've hosted our own through Career Source. We have participated in the very successful MCPS Career Day. We join parent partnership events to share and recruit. And we've also participated with Marion County Sheriff Department in their career fair. Other efforts that we continue to put forth is the contract agreement that we have with an outside vendor to help us in securing certified bus drivers. Under the retention area, we are successful in ensuring that the applicants meet all the qualifications needed to transport our children. We have a paid training program for bus drivers and bus aides who successfully complete all requirement and are hired on to join our team. The perfect attendance bonus, which is longstanding in place, provides $250 per semester for bus drivers and aides who meet the requirement of perfect attendance by semester. Other areas that we have and continue to show employee appreciation and recognition through events, such as Attendance Matters, where we recognize and award by zone as a whole group the zone with the highest percentage over a length of time, typically a 30-day period, sometime a 60-day period. And we're measuring the highest attendance by percentage. We provided breakfast, lunch, pizza parties, which are still ongoing, and prizes through drawings. With the support of donors and partnerships through the foundation, we were able to provide not only the luncheons and prizes, but also have drawings for tangible gifts that were provided through the donors. One other event that we've hosted and were very successful with was the Battle of the Zones in Attendance Competitions, allowing the zones to compete against each other to encourage the drivers and aides to be in attendance each day. Under key activity number two, upgrade the global positioning system on buses to 4G for the continued support of fleet tracking and improved communication. Along with our recent upgrade from 3G to 4G, we added Here Comes the Bus. Here Comes the Bus is a website and app that can be used by parents and students to see the location of the child bus, to get the notification pushed to them upon arrival at the bus stop. To date, we have 4,197 accounts utilizing the app, and they are tracking 4,641 students. Real-time tracking is important for monitoring school buses. GPS software may be used by transportation staff to share the bus's location with school administrators, to assist drivers along the travel route with turn-by-turn directions, and to find vehicle's exact location in the event of an emergency or a mechanical breakdown. We continue to explore other ways that we can be successful in the on-time transportation of students and by utilizing and looking into student ridership software. This software that we are currently exploring will identify the location where students get on and off the bus. While the Here Comes the Bus is tracking the vehicle, student ridership will track the student. As we take a look at key activity number three, we're looking to establish, which we have in place and is successful, the Lead Driver Program that we utilize to assist in providing additional support to newly hired bus drivers and bus aides. The current program consists of 16 lead drivers. We have four in each zones. The drivers were selected for their credibility, dependability, and willingness to serve as a coach. The program was developed to help build relationships, enhance driver retention, build confidence, and exchange pertinent information and skills. Key activity number four, maximize fleet usage to improve the timely delivery of students to school and home. This begins with a strong preventive maintenance schedule. Keeping the fleet on a service schedule helps to maximize the lifespan of our vehicles. Our buses are on a 28-day maintenance schedule. The state of Florida requires a 30-day rotation maintenance schedule. We are in the process of purchasing a fleet maintenance management software to be utilized in the bus garage. This will help us to reduce the paper trail and automate use of spreadsheets, give real-time monitoring and reporting as it relates to audits, compliance, and daily monitoring of our buses and other fleet vehicles that come through the shop. We are evaluating and currently have met with and done webinars with three to four different vendors as it relates to routing and planning. It's important to evaluate our current routing and planning software for improvement of route planning to ensure that it still meets the need of the district, and if not, to find that software that will meet our need. We're looking for one that will better meet the need of the district, because it's important to have a good routing software that can pinpoint where routes and stops can be rearranged or look at how schools are paired and make changes that will help us save time. We continue to monitor and review route combinations throughout the year, school pairing, and route travel route to ensure that we're getting the best use of each bus. The key to getting the best use of each bus is to ensure that for one bus, you're serving multiple schools. And by doing that, we utilize double or tripartite routing. We will continue, we will maintain steadfast and committed to our mission of providing safe and reliable transportation, which is important to us and critical to our families. Last, I would like to mention about our on-time arrival approval improvement that we've done since January. When we looked at data from January, we had an 85% on-time delivery of students to school. We dropped significantly in February to 74%. March, we increased to 88%. And a look at April showed us that we were at a 93% improvement rate for on-time delivery of students to school. Thank you for your time. And now, I'd like to introduce you and bring forward the Executive Director of Operations and Emergency Management, Ms. Dobbins.
Thank you. How do we measure our priority strategy 4C? In order to track our progress and determine whether we are on target to meet our goal of ensuring facilities are healthy and safe physical environments for working and learning, we will continually reduce the time to complete work orders. This will involve implementing data collection mechanisms, exploring funding sources, and ensuring effective resource allocation. This work will involve four key activities. And here's our Supervisor of Facilities, Mr. Robert Knight, to share key activity one. And here's our Supervisor of Facilities, Mr. Robert Knight, to share key activity one.
Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, and Mrs. Presspatino. Uh as far as key activity number one, when this involves developing a facilities master plan that addresses infrastructure with a priority on critical systems. You all are aware that each year we come to you with a five-year work program, and that five-year work program lists a number of different projects at different facilities, mostly drawn from the five-year survey, which is a snapshot of the condition of our facilities. In a lot of cases, that snapshot has includes in it a number of different systems that need work at a school all under the umbrella of a renovation project. However, what happens in some cases is we don't have the funding for the entire renovation. So what key activity number one does is it allows us to go much deeper into that renovation headline and study the critical systems that would directly impact the functioning of a school. So if you think about it, there are four critical systems. Those are not necessarily in this order, heating, ventilating, and air conditioning, the electrical power grid, the plumbing infrastructure, and then the roof slash structure. Any one of those four experiencing a major problem would directly impact the activities going on at any particular facility. So the idea behind key activity number one is we dial deeper, we extract those critical systems and prioritize them so they can be funded because obviously we may not be able to fund a twenty million dollar renovation, but certainly might be able to fund a four million dollar infrastructure upgrade at a particular facility. How we would accomplish that would be, we've already sought, in this case, principal input, school input, because we want to know, how are these systems impacting your daily operations? In addition, we partner with technical services to look at the number of work orders at any particular school, especially as they pertain to the critical systems. Do we have a system that's running but perhaps is taking too much maintenance dollars and time away from staff, and it has become a drawback on us? And we can replace that infrastructure and give us another twenty years of maintenance-free operation? In addition, do we have situations where the system is running, but we can no longer get parts for that system? Which means it's okay until something goes down, but then when it does go down, we're faced with a situation where everything stops because we don't have, do not have those resources to replace. And so in key activity number one, it's a lot really of analyzing much deeper than we had in the past to try to isolate those systems that are most impactful to the education process and get ahead of the game, try to fund those things, if not in whole, certainly in part. And I would amount, it would amount to, if you think of your body going in and having something major done to your heart, maybe there are other issues, but if you can uh keep things beating, as we do in the school, you have a much greater opportunity of keeping things running rather than simply shelving a project because you cannot afford the entire thing in one shot. So as we move forward, I will turn this over to Mr. Sean Duncan, the Coordinator of Technical Services, so that he can discuss key activity number two.
Morning. In key activity number two, the Technical Services Department will be purchasing a new software system named Facilities Management Express. FMX will allow us to develop a system for tracking, prioritizing, and responding to maintenance requests. FMX will allow us to process work orders electronically, reduce the need for paper copies of work orders, and assist with collecting data for preventative maintenance plans. Currently, we have to print every work order that is submitted to us and issue the work order to an employee. The employee completes the task on the work order and then turns the work order into their foreman for review. Once the foreman reviews the work order, they turn the work order into our office staff to start the closeout and billing process. This software will also help the Technical Services Department streamline the closeout and billing process. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Robert Knight, Supervisor of Facilities, to discuss key activity three.
Thank you. Good morning again. So under key activity three, the uh the idea is exploring alternative revenue sources to meet facility and maintenance needs that are unfunded in the five-year capital improvement plan. There are really two approaches here. When you look at the big picture in terms of funding, the vast majority of our funding comes from local property taxes, which can be impacted by the economy and property values. And in recent years, we've not had any other revenue source, especially from the state. And so that's pushed us in the position of having to look elsewhere. So as far as alternative revenue sources, some of the things that come to mind that we look to explore would be things such as a referendum to the local voters, allow them to have control of their own dollars spent. And and way we would do that, it was we would package up some of the things talked about in key activity number one. We'd also look at purchasing software to give us a detailed database as to the functioning of those systems, what brands they are, what types they are, how often they need service, so that we can better explain, especially in a referendum setting, what particular aspects of revenue funding would control what happens at that school. If we're simply replacing equipment, but it's not really clearly defined, it's sometimes a harder sell, and it's also much harder to track uh just a re-what are we getting for the money that we're spending on these? Other opportunities might exist in the form of grants. Sometimes grants uh have very key components to them and restrictions, but we also want to explore particular grants. Sometimes what we don't necessarily know about would be a particular grant for, say, energy. If you replace your equipment, there's money available in the name of saving energy. And of course, we would replace equipment, not only for energy, but also for the functioning of the school. And another tier in terms of alternative revenue source might be the borrowing of funds where we receive money upfront to accomplish projects and then pay that back in time. Now I noted there was another approach we wanted to take, and it's not so much a revenue source, but a deferred payment. In some cases, manufacturers offer you situations where they can front the money, front the material and the equipment for you, and you pay that equipment back, not only in one lump sum, which is what we would do in a traditional sense, where if you want to do twenty million dollars worth of work, you have to have twenty million dollars upfront. So in this case, you'd buy the equipment and pay for it in payments like you would a car payment over extended period of time, and we would take ownership at the end of the payment plan. But that would allow us to stretch those dollars beyond just that six-month project or just that particular fiscal year. And other opportunities that we're seeking would be to utilize manufacturers directly, not only to produce the equipment, but to install it and be responsible for the engineering of it. We actually did this as a pilot program at Forest High School. Where last year, we replaced all three main chiller components and went straight to the manufacturer, which allowed them to be able to back up and understand their own systems. It actually gave us a cost savings of roughly two hundred thousand dollars off to the traditional way of hiring an independent engineer, an independent contractor, to try to shoehorn uh being able to put this equipment in there. With the manufacturer's knowledge of not only our systems, but their own equipment, it allowed us to fast-track, which is what produced the savings. The way this would show up is when we come into the five-year work program, we would know going in what the funding sources would be for these proposed projects, and then allow us in the background to be working ahead of time so that when these projects are approved, we already have the funding resource in place or the payment resource in place, and it would allow us to get those projects out the door a little bit quicker, thus eventually uh cutting down on the number of work orders as we have new equipment coming online. So I will also reintroduce at this time, Mr. Sean Duncan, again, to talk about key activity number four.
Thank you. Key activity number four, the Technical Services Department will secure vendors and contracts to provide air quality enhancements in heating, ventilation, and air conditioning units. This process will help our HVAC systems operate more efficiently, will reduce routine maintenance needs, and help assure that airborne viruses are eliminated. Air quality is essential in ensuring a healthy, safe, learning, and working environment. In key activity four, we have already secured vendors and contracts to install air treatment and disinfectant devices in our HVAC units to help provide clean air throughout the district. At this time, I would like to introduce the Supervisor of Food Services Department, Ms. Jamie Lovett, to discuss Priority Strategy D.
Thank you. Good morning. Food and Nutrition Services will expand wellness and nutritional education to improve academic performance and behavior by supporting our students in making healthy food choices. The outcome metric will be measured by school lunch participation. We will increase student lunch participation from fifty-one percent in twenty-twenty-one to eighty percent by twenty-twenty-six. We share in our students' success by ensuring that students have healthy and appealing meal choices each day. As we move into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, Food and Nutrition is working on key activities to meet or exceed this goal. Key activity one focuses on nutrition education and expanding program marketing. Food and Nutrition will publish menus and a wellness newsletter monthly for our students and families. The newsletter will pertain relevant information about living a healthy lifestyle. Our department has two registered dieticians who will be involved in expanding nutritional education opportunities for our students that can be used in classrooms and in the cafeteria. Our software system, Meal Viewer, translates nutritional information from recipes to menus. Students and families can visit the website or download the app to access this nutritional information. Food and Nutrition is expanding the fresh fruit and vegetable program and making plans to enhance the educational materials for this program. We are working to integrate the farm-to-school program into our fresh fruit and vegetable program. This will allow us the opportunity to teach our students about harvesting fruits and vegetables, and we want to educate from the seed to the table. Social media marketing is a great platform for engaging our students and our families. Food and Nutrition Services is working to create a social media platform uh to highlight healthy meals and market our program. In addition, social media would be a great way to network with our families to gain valuable feedback and to provide educational opportunities. Key activity two concentrates on increasing student involvement in meal programs. Food and Nutrition will implement taste testing to allow our students to give feedback on menu options. Taste testing engages our students and gives them a voice on future menu offerings. Student buy-in will increase the likelihood that our students make healthy food selections. Monthly awards programs will be implemented to encourage student participation in our program. We will ho- hold taste testing days at our elementary schools to encourage students to try healthy food options such as new vegetables. Students will be given a prize to maximize participation. In addition, Food and Nutrition will provide opportunities throughout the district to win prizes uh for participation in the meal program. And key activity three addresses expanding student involvement in the selection of their meals. Food and Nutrition is looking into a software program that will allow our students the ability to preorder meals. We are also working on options to give them the ability to customize their meals a- as such as a build-your-own-salad concept that we will introduce next year in elementary schools. In addition, in secondary, Food and Nutrition is moving towards trending options that our students see in restaurants. For example, we are planning options such as a build-your-own-rice-bowl, salad bars, and many other bar options that we will um have on the menu next year. We are expanding our menu offerings to allow our students the ability to make choices and to enjoy their delicious and nutritious meals. This concludes the presentation for Priority Strategy D. At this time, I would like to introduce our Purchasing Specialist, Mr. Collins, who will discuss Priority Strategy E.
Good morning. I'd like to share with you Prior- Priority Strategy E of Goal Four, Fiscal and Operational Efficiency. Key activity one would be to explore the use of a web-based bid and contract management software so that we could streamline the bid process to increase efficiency and then reduce errors. By utilizing electronic bidding and contract management software, staff time devoted to the bid process will be reduced, and vendor bidding errors such as missing pages, late bids, et cetera, will be reduced or eliminated altogether. Electronic bidding will also make seeking quotes quicker and easier for all end users and will broadcast our bids and quotes to a larger database of potential bidders. This implementation will increase both fiscal and operational efficiency within the district. Key activity two would be to revise the contracting process to reduce time for completion. Uh some of this work has already um been done by the legal department, and they have um quite effectively reduced the time involved. But we will continue to work with them, as well as end users from our department and schools, to revise the contracting process. Our goal is to alleviate the confusion that occurs in the contracting process and to reduce the time it takes to have a fully executed contract in place and ready to use so that Goal One, increasing student achievement opportunities, access, and equity is not hindered by the contracting delays or holdups. Key activity three would be to establish innovative ways to increase procurement training for district employees in the purchasing process. Increasing procurement training will create greater fiscal and operational efficiencies over time. Our plan is to conduct small group, in-person, and/or web-based trainings for secretaries to keep them up to date on procurement changes that may arise from time to time. Likewise, we will conduct roundtable Q and A's with secretaries to create more open communications and to provide opportunities for them to ask questions and receive answers in a group setting. This will strengthen internal communications between district staff, which also aligns with Goal Five of our strategic plan. Key activity four would be to expand piggyback contracts where appropriate to optimize savings. Many times, utilizing an already established bid or contract, also known as a piggyback, from another entity or cooperative contract solicited on behalf of a group of entities is an effective way to receive better pricing for goods and/or services. As an example, utilizing a larger-sized school district bid many times will lead to better pricing than if we were to issue our own bid for the same items due to the larger-sized district's buying power. Likewise, using a piggyback contract saves time as the bidding process has already been done. This reduces the staff time involved in writing bids and allows staff to work on other pressing items. That concludes my portion of the program. At this time, I would like to introduce our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Teresa Bosnalis, who will discuss Strategy Four F. And I just messed up the... I need a little help, Kevin. Oh, thank you, somebody.
Good morning. I am here to discuss Priority Strategy F. And the outcome metrics are for risk management as well as continuity of operations. We will compare the projected annual savings to the board for self-funded health plans versus the fully insured plan in each calendar year, starting with twenty-twenty-one, where we had a projected savings of three point nine million. Future year savings will be determined via an actuarial analysis. Continuity of operations will ensure the, that the, in the event of unforeseen emergencies, by increasing the unassigned ending fund balance from six percent in the current year that is budgeted to ten to twelve percent by the twenty-twenty-six year. This is for general fund revenue only. The confidence in this is based on the board recognizing this need that we need to plan for unforeseen emergencies, whether it's hurricanes or um the, the um changes in FTE from year to year. So in our Board Policy sixty-two thirty-five, we have created a stabilization fund. And if funds are available over- And if funds are available over the six percent, we will move those funds to that stabilization fund, and the board will direct when it will be used and how it will be used. You may recall from many budget presentations that our auditors believe that we need to maintain between five and seven percent in our fund balance or our savings, as most people recognize it to be. But our credit rating agencies would like to see us do a double-digit between ten and twelve percent. So that is our goal. We realize that depending on the financial condition of our district, we may not reach that goal in five years, but that will be what we strive towards, because plans do change. Strategy Four F says that we will ensure financial stability, sound fiscal management, and operational efficiency. Our Key Activity One is to develop a robust system of key performance indicators to monitor and as- and assess operational efficiency, including a risk assessment. While most school districts track indicators of student achievement through testing, whether it be quarterly or yearly, I think that we have come to realize that it is very important that we will benefit on the operations side from tracking key performance indicators known as KPIs for school operations. If we have effective KPIs, it will help our district to reduce costs, increase efficiency, and identify best practices, collect, and benchmark our data, and make informed decisions. Then that's what you have heard this morning from my other fellow operations group. We are embarking upon this process in all operations areas, whether it's transportation, maintenance, food service, capital improvements, and even human resources. You have heard of these plans today and in previous goal presentations. In addition to this, we have- we- we have also embarked upon a risk analysis of all financial and operational activities within our district so that we can identify high-risk areas with the most impact, as well as identifying what we do well. Key Activity Two. Ensure financial resources are dedicated to the district's highest priority strategies, including the utilization of grants. We created a budget process for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three that aligns the budgetary resources with the objectives of our strategic plan. This template required staff to ident- identify the strategic plan goal that supported their budget requests. This was something very new to us and took a little working, but I believe that all the departments and schools did a great job with that. We've also begun a process of reviewing grant applications to ensure that they align with the strategic plan, and we are reviewing the budgets of grants quarterly to ensure that they are being spent and spent timely. We don't like to send any money back. We want to utilize those grants. Key Activity Three. Plan, develop, and monitor the district's budget and provide relevant financial information to decision-makers and the community, including training for district staff and school leaders. We will continue to be transparent with our budget, continue sharing documents with the community via the webpage. We will also begin posting additional information on the webpage, which includes monthly expenditure reports and quarterly reports. We will monitor spending on a monthly basis or continue doing that of all funds. We will continue to do what we call our projections, where we look at actual expenditures, project what we think we will spend for the remaining of the year so that we can maintain that fund balance. We will continue to create those reports that I mentioned before, whether they're monthly or quarterly, and we will be looking to see that we are spending those dollars in a timely manner. We also, this year, looked at our twenty-two, twenty-two budget requests and matched them to actual spending from a prior year and reviewed those items with the superintendent as well as our leadership team. Projects in the future include more detailed training to our district staff and school leaders. We also are moving toward, what you probably have heard from Dr. Gullett, is a school-based budgeting model. But before we get there, we've got to train our leadership at the schools of how this process works. We are also going to train our district staff and school leaders on funding and the different meth- methods of funding so- so that they can see how it impacts their school district as well as their- their schools. We have started working with Goal Five in terms of community training with the Communications and Community Engagement Department. We will begin working on more documents that explain the complex funding, and we'll put it in a format that is more user-friendly for our community. And that is the overview of our Goal Number Four Fiscal and Operational Efficiency. We thank you very much for your attention and your support.
Thank you. Any comments on the board? On the whole program?
Yeah. I know, I have- I have a lot of notes here. No, you can go ahead and sit down, Ms. Boston Ellis, it's fine. Um, I don't know if- do you want me to go first? It's fine. Uh, so, let's- let's- there's so much here, guys. I mean, that was really so many of you, so many departments. This really is the inner workings of a school district and all of the people and the parts that make the operations side make everything else function, and I think that you all have been wonderful examples of explaining very eloquently how much is important and necessary on that side of the house, I guess you could say. Uh, there are lots of positive things that I heard today. I do have a couple of questions. Uh, I'm- I'm grateful for the idea of a digital master plan. I- I think that that is imperative. In- in a part of that, hearing that we're getting additional work order software and things like that, I- I believe that it would be shocking to the community if they did hear directly what was said, that- that our work orders were being printed and physically taken to a job site, and then I- I mean, this is two thousand and twenty-two, and we're operating in the nineteen-eighties. Frankly, that's shocking to me. Um, so, having a digital master plan brings us into the twenty-first century, I- I guess you could say. Um, there- there is one- well, let me keep talking about positives. Um, I- I love also the idea of the social media engagement for Food and Nutrition. I- I love that. That's where our kids are. That's where we're going to get them interested. Uh, the pre-ordering of meals, it's something that happens in private schools and things. That's all very exciting, and the build-your-own bowls and salads, and you're going to have board members going to schools on a regular basis just to have lunch. So that's really, really exciting. I- Ms. Boston Ellis knows that I love the idea of- of the school-based budgeting and where I hope that we are going with that. I- understanding that you all have worked diligently, and I'm looking forward to seeing the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget to see how it aligns directly with the strategic plan, because this isn't just a sitting document on a- on a shelf somewhere we can see, and thank you to Dr. Gullett, that we're seeing on a monthly basis, even almost bi-weekly basis, how the strategic plan is living and active, and it's- it's actually being implemented, and we're able to track that. So the efficiency and the transparency behind aligning our budget to strategic plan initiatives is imperative for where we're moving forward. Um, so, I- I'm so grateful for all of those things. The main question, I guess, that I would say, well, I'll- I'll mention one thing in, uh, in facilities. The one area that I missed hearing in Strategy Four C Key Activity Three. So I know Mr. Knight spoke about grants and referendum and borrowing and deferred payments, but I missed hearing private funding. And- and while we were sitting here, uh, and maybe that's a part of key, you know, the number five, community engagement. Uh, but I just happened to pull up, and this is just an example. No, we don't have an MBA superstar like Vince Carter in our district, but I'm reading, you know, back in two thousand and five, that Vince Carter donated two point five million to have a gym built at Mainland High School in Daytona Beach. It's just one example. That's a- a private funding opportunity that I think we need to not forsake. Um, so when we're talking about Strategy Four C Key Activity Three, let's also consider private funding opportunities that may be available. There may be some generous donor out there that is very interested in having their name on a public facility, and certainly if it was to the tune of two point five million, this board probably would entertain that idea. Uh, the only other question that I have, because we heard so much about software and so many amazing technology upgrades we're- we're having, and even Ms. Boston Ellis touched on human resources getting some software advances. What I didn't hear, and perhaps it's also in process, is finance software upgrades, because uh, in order for us to get to that school-based budget concept, and in order for us to get to that, uh, I- I'm interested in hearing if- if we need to pursue finance technology upgrades as well. Any kind of technology upgrades that are going to help us be more efficient, effective, transparent uh, in these jobs and operational efficiency and effectiveness, I think this board most likely will be excited to entertain. So that's the only thing I didn't hear, and perhaps it's also in the works as well, uh, but that- that's really all I had.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Wow, yeah, a lot of material here. Uh, and I'll- I'll just cruise through it if I- i- if I may. First of all, uh, this is necessary to analyze like this, what you all are doing, and then present it. Because it's an awful lot of money, and it- it, uh, it targets our prime directive, which is education. Uh, without facilities working and without operations, uh, you can't address the education phase. Uh, and we certainly need to improve our education phase. We're in a place that we have to eliminate the downward trend, and we have to turn it around, and you all are in a key position to help with that. Um, let's see. Mr. Morrow on the, uh, technology. Boy, that is everything. It is changing so fast uh, that, uh, I'm glad we've got somebody like you on top of it. Uh, it is something as- as simple as our- as Amazon and SpaceX with the new ability to direct down. I know we talked, and it was a little- it was within your purview, the GPS uh, thought processes with the buses. We've got capability of going from near-space to our receivers and our operation, uh, just on a real regular basis. So I hope you're just all over that, and you'll certainly have my support getting, uh, getting us benefit. Because some of these, uh, I just recently made a change in- in something that went from uh, cable that was about ten megabytes per second. You could get to twenty to an immediate, uh, immediate from a tower uh, in the seventy to one ninety range, uh, just bang, and about half the price. So, these things are just happening, and wow, what a- what a home run. How many- how many times do you get that kind of opportunity? EV buses, I hope we're looking at that. Uh, it's a way to go ten years out. Free oil changes, free maintenance, free, almost free everything. Uh, and these are happening. They're starting. Uh, there are several companies that are involved, many of the big legacy companies, and- and, uh, it's- it's just where we need to go uh, to save money and have high efficiency, and for- for our range, that's absolutely perfect. Um, three cents a mile type thing, go to ten cents a mile, uh, a six or seven cents a mile. I mean, it's like, what? It's so free. It's almost free. Uh, electrons, uh, electricity at about twelve cents a kilowatt hour. It's- it's, uh, it's amazing, the opportunities. Um, let's see, bidding. We have a huge budget, and I'm encouraged to have, uh, have a presentation on that side of things. Ten percent is really easy. You gotta be so careful, though, if you go into a piggyback, you go into these. You- everything can have an advantage, uh, but it can also have a disadvantage. And things, uh, I've dealt with government agencies on the other side as a vendor for many, many years. And, uh, if you're going to have a five-year contract, for example, and then it automatically gets renewed by going into a consent agenda, for example, uh, it is- it's almost like handing out money. So, really be on top of that, really pay attention to it. Understand that in any business, FedEx, anybody, any business, uh, ten percent is very doable. Uh, and our number levels, that's a lot of money. That's like seventy, fifty, seventy million dollars. And it can go to twenty percent, it can go to thirty percent, really easy. Um, it's a very exciting world to be in. Let me see what other, um, uh... Oh, the distributive, the school-based idea is a complete home run. That's the way the world's going, even in a a building. People are no longer stepping up in the- in the higher end of things. No longer going into a room on face-to-face. They're just not doing it. Uh, the newest way is the most efficient way, and those old styles, uh, Vice Chair Campbell indicated, that's like- that's like the old days. Uh, we have new ways of doing things, and, uh, school-based is a home run. You don't have to travel somewhere. You don't have to go to a central location. That was in the old days when Ocala was the central hub. If you wanted to do anything paperwork-wise, uh, courthouse-wise, almost anything, you had to drive into Ocala. You don't have to do that anymore. And- and with school-based, I- I think we'll live to see a- a time when that will be almost recreational, to take a trip into a hard meeting, uh, with- with individuals in the room. Uh, if it's necessary, great, but if it isn't necessary, think of the money that's saved, the time that's saved, uh, and the efficiency and the power of it. So, thank you for the presentation. I'm- I'm encouraged to see the wide-ranging. Uh, Ms. Dobins, it's, uh, you- you have a lot under your- under your purview. It's, uh, it's a- it's a big task, and I think you're doing a great job. Keep it up, and keep in mind that you can always, always do better, and that isn't criticism, that's just encouragement to bridge to the future. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
Thank you, and thank you so much to the operations staff. When I picked up this packet, it was a little bit heavy, heavier than most of the ones that we get, and thirty-seven slides is a lot of information. And as I look through all this, there were a few things that- that jumped out at me. Um, first of all, slide twenty-one, it was Strategy Four C Key Activity Three, which was exploring alternative revenue sources um, to meet facility maintenance needs that are unfunded by the five-year capital improvement plan. And I couldn't help but think that that went directly to, uh, Dr. Curley standing in front of us today. I continue to be very excited about the fact that the community- I continue to be very excited about the fact that the community is really starting to take notice of what we are doing. And it is typical, when something touches an individual citizen and they're passionate about it, that's when we hear from them. So I'm so glad to see this in the strategic plan, and I know it's going to connect with community engagement and all of those things that are offshoots of true communication and partnership building, which is a huge goal, continues to be of mine. And with that in mind, I'm also thinking about Goal 4A regarding technology and the digital master plan. And it reminded me that I believe the County Commission is working on their own broadband study. So these, again, are areas of collaboration, potentially. I'm thinking about Mr. Poole and how he helped us with the hotspots and things like that. It's so important for each, all of the governmental entities to know what each of us are doing, what our current priorities are, and how we can avoid duplicating services. Because when you duplicate services, you duplicate expense, and why do that? So I'm really excited about the different meetings that are going on and areas of collaboration and the community coming in. I've been saying this a lot lately, but I really am convinced that we are on the cusp of just a breakout time in very good ways for our school system and our community. So that's certainly exciting to me, to be sitting here as a board member, feeling proud about that and excited for the future. The third thing is transportation, and yes, to quote a very bad pun, but it's definitely where the rubber meets the road. And because we depend so heavily on transportation to get our kids to school on time and in good shape, it can't be overemphasized, and it cannot be overthanked to Becky Rora and her team, Mark Bianello, for coming in and assisting. It has been a tremendous challenge, it continues to be challenging. But I'm just really grateful and excited for the progress that we've made. I wrote down the 93%. We were just struggling, it was so hard. And to see us coming out on the other side of that is very gratifying. Is there more work to do? Absolutely, I love the idea, and I agree 100% with Board Member Browning on checking our current contract for the new bus lease that we have, to see what opportunities there may be within our current contract for EV. You know, we may have some in-town routes where those electric buses would work very well for us. And, you know, institutions like school systems are kind of known, at least in the past, being kind of stodgy and slow to move. But I think we're shattering that illusion in every good way. We want to maintain what is so great and traditional and cultural about our schools, but at the same time, we want, we need to be nimble and responsive because things are moving so quickly. And that does bring me to Vice Chair Campbell. You touched on the financial services software and looking to really make that a priority. We're getting very, very close to one-to-one device for kids. I think we've done well to make sure that our kids have what they need in terms of technology. But in order for our organization of our size to function, you know, we've got to be able to churn out the day-to-day and do that in a way that is much more streamlined. It makes me think of Toyota's model of lean manufacturing, you know? And I think we're getting to that point where our employees are feeling quite empowered and quite confident to come forward with suggestions. Great ideas come from everywhere, and that includes the community and our families. So we're beginning to build this network, as I see it, and I know that it's really going to pay dividends for us. Finally, I just want to close by saying that the social connections cannot be underemphasized or overemphasized. In the end, our business is schools and people. And while I love the opportunity to Zoom meetings, while I love the convenience of the things that we've learned that we can do as an offshoot of the pandemic, you know, there are certainly jobs that can be job-shared, there are certainly jobs that can be done remotely. I have relatives that have always worked in the private sector, and so watching what they've experienced, going from totally remote, not going into the office at all, and seeing some of the barriers that that has created, to what I'm seeing is this trend towards back in the office, you know, one or two days a week, so that there is that social connection and that social bonding. I can't imagine that in our local agreement draft, details that I've been tasked with working on with county staff, I can't imagine having done those meetings via Zoom. I'm so glad that we didn't have to do that. Because those in-person conversations and relationship building are so important. And I don't think that they happen at the same deep and passionate level as they do when you're face-to-face across the table with someone. So I hope we never lose that. But I also want to continue to be very nimble, very responsive, very innovative. That's what keeps the flow going, that's what keeps people excited about coming to work. The work that you all do, Ms. Newport, I mean, gosh, so many years of commitment, and I see that in all of you, and I just can't thank you enough. I'm so glad you're here, and please stay, because get ready, because here we come. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Rora. Listen, I just want to tell you, thank you for the presentation. You guys are doing the work every day, all day. And so you're in your lane, you're doing what you are professionals at doing. Keep doing it, the presentation went well. Ms. Campbell has already addressed the concern about the upgrade of the financial software or technology. And we're heading in the right direction. So, and I do want to commend Ms. Rora and her department, because you guys had some challenges, and you still are working them out. And your team deserves to know that you guys have persevered in the midst of all that's been going on, even throughout the pandemic when this thing hit, and continuing to the day. And I know you've had some challenges, but I do want to commend you for what you and your department do, and all of you as well, but definitely transportation, so thank you. Any public comment? There being none, there being no public comment. We're going to take a, it is 11:15, we're going to take a 10-minute break to 11:25. Thank you, guys.
We're back on guys, after that break, needed break. Uh, we're gonna continue with our administrative work session. We're gonna have our area superintendent, Mr. Chad Frazier, and it looks like Ms. Livinggood with our code of student conduct cell phones. Our station.
Good morning Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Mr. Browning, Mrs. Thrower, um, Attorney Powers and Superintendent Dr. Gola and Mrs. Prestapino. It is my pleasure to provide you with information on our current cellphone policy. The statement is located on page twelve of our secondary code of student conduct. I will summarize this policy and provide some key points. Students can be in possession of a cellphone, but they cannot be visible or activated during regular school hours. The exception is with administrative approval. Students are allowed to utilize devices on district transportation as long as they utilize headphones or earbuds. When a student violates this policy, phones can be confiscated. This policy does not allow for unauthorized recording or photographing of employees, volunteers, or and/or students. Refusal to allow a search of the device will be considered in subordination and may result in a suspension, alternative placement and or expulsion. So I have two examples of the codes language for you. There's a level one code and there's a level two code. The largest difference between the two is the repetitive behavior. So usually if it's a first time offense, um, a teacher or an administrator will say, "Hey, put your cellphone away please." The second or third time that this becomes, uh, once they see a pattern, it will move to a level two offense. I gave one example in the slide point slides deck for you, which is again, this is one school example, but it is common practice. Usually on the first offense, a student's phone will be confiscated and then the parent will have to come at the end of the school day or the next day to pick up the phone from the student services or discipline department. Usually in the second offense, that also is the case. Usually they say, "You know the rules, you need to put your phone away, go ahead and give it to me so I can give it to your parent." And then on the third offense, the infraction moves to insubordination. Um, and then it continues from there, goes from insubordination from the third and usually, um, each time after that, it is still documented as a insubordination consequence. Now going to have our area superintendent, Mr. Frazier, continue with the infraction data.
Thank you, Dr. Livinggood. Good morning all. Uh, before I share some of the cellphone infraction data that we have, I just kinda wanna preference this with what Dr. Livinggood just shared, that as it continues to be a repeated offense, it does move into insubordination and that can be defined in a lot of different ways, uh, from a student, so that particular data is very hard to delineate to see exactly how many insubordination infractions have occurred, uh, due to the repeated misuse of a cellphone. So as of April the eighth of twenty twenty-two, our elementary data for our total level one cellphone infractions was fourteen. Our total level two cellphone infractions was thirty-one. In secondary, our total level one cellphone infractions were five hundred and ninety-one. Our totals level two cellphone infractions are two hundred and fifty-nine. Those totals between elementary and secondary equal eight hundred and ninety-five level one and level two cellphone infractions. And for a twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two total infractions across all of our schools, both elementary and secondary, we've had twenty-nine thousand three hundred and sixty-three infractions. That eight hundred and ninety-five equals a three percent total of infractions that have been coded as level one and level two. But once again, that does not include the repeated misuse of a cellphone that would be categorized as insubordination and greater disciplinary consequences would occur at that point. Like always, when we're looking at policy language that we currently have board approved and as we're working through our code of conduct committee to analyze and look at what we have, it's important to hear from our school-based leaders as well. So I've invited two of our principals here today to give you, uh, what, how they're managing cellphones on their school campuses and some of the challenges that they have as well. And so I've got Mr. Chris Carlisle here from Vanguard High School to share the high school perspective. And then directly after him, I have Dr. Dion Gary here from Bellevue Middle School to share how Bellevue handles cellphones as well.
Good morning, Chris Carlisle, proud principal at Vanguard High School. Um, we follow the code of conduct. On our campus, we do have some exceptions. Um, our rules, cellphones need to be away in classrooms during instructional time. Um, our exception is if a teacher has an instructional activity that uses a cellphone. Lot of great programs that use that, Kahoot, um, Canvas, students access their Canvas, their Skyward, they can use their cellphone, but it has to be with with teacher permission. Um, again, following the code, you know, if if we have any, um, violations of that, we do follow through with disciplinary consequences following along. Uh, they account for about two percent of our total discipline referrals right now. Um, a big thing for us is is communicating our expectation of, uh, on cellphones. So the beginning of the school year, every single class period, our students will understand the, 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 um, expectations for cellphones. Also, we do that at the beginning of every quarter. We go through every single class period where our teachers will go through all, all expectations, including cellphone use. Um, and also I recite every single morning during the morning announcements, our expectations on cellphones. And that is that they should not be visible in the classroom during instructional time, uh, with the exception of for an instructional activity. And when I say that, I also, uh, encourage our teachers, if they have any issues with with that expectation, that they can contact our student services department. Again, we, we recite that every single morning. Um, I, I can imagine that my students could probably recite that back to you, um, if if asked. Um, so that's the way we handle cellphones right now. I will say, uh, we do have an exception during transitions and at lunches. Uh, we understand that, that we believe it's an expectation of our parents, our families, that they're able to, um, communicate with their child during the school day. So we do allow our students to have them during transitions and at lunches. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, school board.
Morning.
Morning.
Chairman Cummings, Dr. Gola. Thank you for having me this morning, Dion Gary, principal of Bellevue Middle School. I'm just to shine a little light on the middle school perspective. Um, so currently, I believe as our policy stands, um, it's well-written and it gives us a lot of flexibility where students can have a cellphone, but the policy states that cellphone should not be seen or heard. And so that means that a student can have a cellphone in their bookbag turned off for safety purposes and that's an appropriate way to use cellphones. Students riding a bus, student gets off the bus, has to walk another four or five blocks home, pull out the cellphone out of their bag, "Hey mom, I made it off the bus, I'm walking home." Right? Great use of cellphone, right? Use appropriately. So currently at Bellevue, uh, our policy is if there's a cellphone, first infraction, it's not a referral, it's a confiscation. It goes to discipline and the student can receive that cellphone at the end of the day. The second infraction, the parent, it's not a referral, the cellphone goes to discipline. The second infraction, the parent, it's not a referral, the cellphone goes to discipline, and this, the parent must come and retrieve that cellphone. So by the third infraction, we start to get into the referral area. I spend a lot of time educating students and parents about cellphones, and that is just being really super redundant. Um, every morning, just like Mr. Carlisle said, I'm on morning announcements, and and one of my phrases is that, "Students, please remember our school-wide rules and expectations. All cellphone electronic devices should not be seen or heard." And I use that also with parents every Friday in a Sky Alert message. So on a Friday evening, about four, four-thirty, I send out to parents, maybe upcoming events, things that have passed, other, uh, important notes for parents. And in the end, I always say, "Parents, please remember our school-wide expectations. Cellphone electronic devices should not be seen or heard." So that is me educating our students on the policy and educating parents on the policy. And so what I've seen is that we don't have a lot of cellphone issues, and the issues that we do have, students quickly understand. If a student has their cellphone out and a teacher decides not to confiscate it because they're using their teacher judgment and asks the student to put it away, most students comply, and it's not a major issue there. I will say that there are society pressures. That door for cellphones is always trying to creep open. And for high schools, I was a high school administrator. Um, I know Mr. Carlisle has transitioning lunches. For Bellevue Middle School, um, it's, it's better for us. We stay black and white. It is cellphone electronic devices should not be seen or heard, and that's for the entire school day. Um, and there's always pressure to kinda push that open. "Hey, what about during transitions? What about during lunches?" And so it's beneficial for us to just say, "Well, you know, student gets home, students off, uh, off the property, then they can use their cellphones how they see fit." I keep going back as you look at policy as a school board, um, and just say, "What is our overall goal and purpose of schools?" And as you know, it is to educate students. So as we create policy, we just wanna make sure that as society brings pressures in, as you get emails and calls from parents about a cellphone referral or kinda trying to push that cellphone door open, um, our main purpose is to educate students, and so that really helps inside of the classroom. My most recent example of a cellphone use was a mother and a daughter texting in class. This was a six-period math class. Um, the teacher was, was so furious, she came and she had a conversation with me. So two weeks before Math FSA, teacher's in a full review and the student's in the back having a text conversation with mother. And that let me know that I have to continue educating the students and parents about our mission. Here's a teacher that's saying, "I'm responsible for your learning and your spending time in class to text with with your parent." Um, so that just kinda highlighted that I have to keep on educating the community about the importance of not using cellphones and using cellphones appropriately. So I'm gonna kinda close with this by saying that, um, as you make policy, as things in education change and all of the challenges, um, and I think I speak for all principals and administrators with this, is that the one thing that always must remain constant is that schools and classrooms must always be conducive for learning. So I know you have a lot of pressure and and a lot of challenges and a lot of emails and and pushing back from, from the public, but just keep that in mind from the school base. If classrooms and schools are conducive for learning, then we can always do our job and meet our overall mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gary.
Thank you, Dr. Dion and Mr. Carlisle. Uh, Board members, I'd like to give you an opportunity, if you'd like to ask our principals any questions, because I would like to release them, to get them back into their schools as quickly as I can.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being with us all morning.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I have some questions, Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dr. Gary, and, uh, specifically on your point about pushback, push, pushing every direction. Uh, you know, I know you're about education. I know both of you are. Uh, I wanna advocate a position, uh, for the sake of understanding and education. Cellphones are ubiquitous. They're, they're part of life. Uh, they're artificial intelligence, and I say they're, uh, Library of Congress ten times over in your hand. Okay, we're an educational operation. Um, in my life, going back as a pilot, you aviate, you navigate, and you communicate. You cannot lose the panel. You cannot lose the, the phone. You can, you can get away in emergency. But we're instructed, we learn, we get better, we become absolute competent, uh, communicators and researchers. I see the cellphone, and I see our job as educating in this modern time, uh, with that artificial intelligence is what it is. Uh, that will become a watch. It will become likely implanted. It will become various levels as we go along. And the skills that are brought forward, and I think you guys are touching on it. See, I'm, I'm on anti-criminalizing for normal behavior. There isn't a, there isn't a grown-up alive that I know of that didn't get in some sort of a fistfight in, uh, on a playground. I mean, if that isn't the truth, you know, you were hanging out with your mama too much, or something was going on. All right, so the criminalizing referral, all this business, thirty-some thousand, those are thirty thousand opportunities. I believe, from this board, we can lay out a policy that encourages education so that it becomes part of the curriculum. And I'm going down into, um, at Bellevue Middle, the, the, this is just one example, but the artificial intelligence work with technology. I mean, you couldn't, you, you couldn't have the class, you couldn't move, you couldn't do that without, uh, that artificial intelligence. But it is properly ensconced in the, in the curriculum. And there are grown-ups in the room, and if there's abuse of anything, you know, we used to cheat on, on a test with putting a, you know, writing something on your palm or something. So there's different ways. There's technology, right? Kids will always do a workaround. Uh, it takes grown-ups, and that's part of teaching them good, right, just, decent fairness. Take the test. Stand by what you know, that kinda thing. In other words, it's a learning opportunity. Could you guys talk to the possibility of including cellphones much, much more deeply? Don't think of them as criminal, or just don't even think of them as negative. Uh, this is above the Y on X and Y axis. It's a up, up. We're, we're talking education. When you come out, you're gonna go to work for, you're gonna go to Harvard, you're gonna go to work for FedEx, you're gonna do whatever. You've gotta be the sharpest person in the room with that artificial intelligence. Where'd you learn it? You learned it back in Marion County, uh, in, in your school days. Can you just talk to that particular perspective of how we could better include it, uh, in our curriculum?
Yeah, like I mentioned, um, we do allow our, our teachers to have the, um, the deference to allow our students to use them in the, in the classroom, uh, under their supervision. Uh, like I mentioned, they can use them for Kahoot, which is a review game that, that is immediate feedback and and answers to questions. Uh, they use them for Skyward to look at their grades and and anything else. They use them for Canvas. So we do, our students do use them in the classroom. I've been in plenty of classrooms where, um, you know, real quick, they're asked to pull out a cellphone and and type in a, an answer to a question that immediately goes up on the screen, and all the students can see the response. So th- those are my experiences with incorporating, incorporating it into the classroom. Um, students researching or or, you know, referring right to Google right, right immediately. Um, you know, so those, those are my experiences.
On, on that, uh, uh, before Dr. Gary, uh, on that particular item, um, I have experience in Celestron products, telescopes, deep space, uh, in the school system, in this school system, and up in Gadsden County. We took the worst-performing school system, and we did it through the governor's office. And one of the things we did, and I can just see this happening with a cellphone, for example, uh, it's very anecdotal, but, uh, the idea of a CRT screen on a microscope, so the entire class sees that amoeba in that pond, that, that drop of pond water at the same time, that everybody advances to a skill level with a cellphone. In other, in other words, not thinking of the worst, like teaching driving where you really learn the best and you learn, you learn correctly. You don't outlaw them because somebody does spin their tires or drive reckless or whatever, you know, like that, using that as a metaphor. So, so that kind of learning, to me, incorporates the brightest with the others that can learn, can catch up, can become the brightest to teach. You know, in other words, that thing feeds on itself. I'm sorry, okay, uh, uh, Dr. Gary.
Your thoughts made me think about, uh, when drones first became popular. We had a course, um, that a teacher, so we took an ag teacher, and they went to be certified. And students at Vanguard High School, students could take a drone course. So the teacher was certified to teach drones, and then students requested the class, and that was an appropriate way to use the drone. Since then, I think there's some policies that went in place, but for a time, there was a drones class. And I'm thinking that on first thought, is that you're thinking about something of that, well, we could go in the Florida Course Directory, say what type of course matches technology, cellphone use that we could use where students with really bright, really advanced can really take those skills and and move further. So I would assume that there would be a course that we could create and have a teacher certified to teach some advanced skills in cellphone use. I think that's what you're.
And that does, that makes a lot of sense. Yes, that's the high end of it. Uh, the, 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 the smaller end would be to take, uh, like accounting proficiency and then pull some of it down through the entire curriculum. So people understood debit and credit, for example, or math, that they, yes, you've got your high end, but pull it on down so everybody gets some of it. And what I'm trying to do here is advance a discussion on non-criminalizing, non-referral, that type of thing, so that we're way out ahead of it, and we really become the leader. We're trying to get to the top ten percent in the state. And if, I could just see the headlines now. Governor gives award to, uh, cellphone genius award. And there it is, right out of Marion County, and these people are coming out. Yeah, you can get a ticket and get criminalized for spinning your tires or reckless driving, but these people come out capable to be able to go run in the, not in the Indy 500, but they're a, they're, they're, they're safe drivers because they looked at all aspects of it. Uh, so, uh, yeah, I, just, uh, beautiful minds of you principals to be able to, yeah, go down that road, uh, Chad, with the discipline idea. Like, discipline ought to be way out there, because if you challenge a young person with squeezing them down with discipline, the next thing you know, they're gonna outsmart you, they're gonna outsmart, and they're outsmarting themselves. And then they're in deeper and deeper and deeper, and there's just no way out of it. But there is with creativity and education, and you all have seen it, right? You go up and it expands. It's exponential. So I, I just wanna push that, and I, I would love to see a dialogue going down that road to win that governor's award for the most competent, uh, utilization of artificial intelligence in the, in a form of a communication device with the world, with the planet, with the universe. Wow. It just, to me, that's a home run. And I can see a screen with, with somebody up there demonstrating their capability. This, I call it magic thumbs. I, I couldn't keep up with these, the slowest students you have with that thumb stuff. Uh, you know, they can go blitzing on that stuff. So anyhow, CW back in the Navy, you know, you can do eighty words a minute. Those guys can do eighty words a minute with their thumbs. I don't know how they're doing it, but they're geniuses, so I just wanna go down that road. I'll turn it back over to the board. Thank you, Chair.
Um, thank you again, gentlemen, for being here, and I, I wrote down a lot of different comments and thoughts, and I wasn't necessarily gonna address you guys, 'cause I know you guys need to get back to school. Uh, but based on some things that, um, I, I'm hearing here, we, we did just have our presentation on technology advances, and we are about to be a one-to-one Chromebook ratio with all of our students. Do you believe that the instructional programs that cur- currently are being used on cellphones would also be available? I mean, Kahoot can be downloaded on Chromebooks, and, and all of the things we're currently using cellphones for could just be used on the Chromebook, I mean, Mr. Carlisle? Uh, especially if, if we're at a one-to-one ratio and every student has one. I, I'm just, I, I'm wanting to make sure that, that we are giving all the information.
Yes, I, yes, they, they can, and, and some classes use the Chromebooks for those programs.
Right.
It's, it's, it's up to the teacher.
So from the communication standpoint, so you guys may or may not know, but I'm definitely a communicator, and I understand that the spoken word is something that we're taking for granted and that we, as a society, has taken for granted the spoken word, and, and I teach effective public speaking, and I understand it every single day, 'cause I have college students that can't speak to each other. Uh, and so they, they one-time were Marion County Public School students, so I, I understand that. Um, my question, I suppose, to Mr. Carlisle again, I'm sorry, because you have a little bit more leniency in your policy, or your procedure, I'm not gonna say policy, because frankly, I believe our policy is written exactly the way it needs to be written. I think every question that, that I have is all based on procedure. And I, I'm grateful that you two gentlemen have come before us today, but I also understand that there are other schools that have different procedures in place, and different schools are looking at this differently, and different administrators are gonna potentially say, "Don't write a referral. We wanna keep our referrals down." I, I don't, I'm not saying that's happening. I'm just saying there's potential there, that that could be occurring. So my question to you, Mr. Carlisle, is whenever you're in a cafeteria, maybe I just need to come and visit Vanguard Cafeteria during lunch, but when you're in the cafeteria, how many students do you see just off by themselves on a cellphone or in a circle on, all on cellphones as opposed to actually having dialogue and communication and building relationship?
There's, there's quite a few that are on their cellphones, absolutely. Um, yeah.
And, and the reason I ask is I had a conversation with a parent yesterday who said that their child was a new student to a school and couldn't find anyone to sit with because everybody was just sitting on their phones, and that was actually at one of our middle schools, not a high school. Um, everybody was just sitting on their phone, and they didn't have any way to break in for conversation or relationship building. And I know we've had a lot of conversation recently about social and emotional learning, and I would be one to believe that we've lost spoken-word communication, we've lost non-verbal communication, we've lost communication in general, so we've lost relationship building. And that in part is why we have social and emotional learning situations. I also would ask if you have been witness to any time that potentially cellphone usage has created any other disruption? Maybe they're, they're, they're gathering at the bus stop because of this, or you know that this dialogue occurred on cellphones in, in appropriately-used times, perhaps. Uh, but do you see that potentially cellphone usage during the day has then escalated to another situation that resulted in a different, different disciplinary infraction that was not cellphone-related, but the cellphone was part of the cause of it?
Yeah, I think we see it. We see a mix of cellphones during the day, but also off-campus, and then they, they come on a campus the next morning, or, you know, it, that, that's hard to really delineate. Um, you know, but, but I think it's a mix.
Okay. Um, and Dr. Gary, you made a statement, and this isn't really a question, but you made a statement that was interesting to me and actually related to something recently uh, in my own home, that there's an expectation of parents, this is your quote I wrote down, "An expectation of parents to be able to communicate with their students throughout the day." Um, I believe that was what you said, Dr. Gary, or maybe it was Mr. Carlisle. I'm sorry. I, I'm sorry. Uh, but it, what was interesting to me about that is, um, recently, I received a text in the middle of the day from my own student, one of my own students and my own children. I'm like, "What, what class were you, what are you doing? What class are you in?" And the response back was, "Well, we were done with our work, so we got to pull out our phones." Are you seeing that be something that, I guess, Dr. Gary, you're probably not having it much on middle school campus, but are teachers having that happen throughout the day?
Vice Chairman Campbell, so for the emergency situation and a parent saying, "I need to get in touch with my child." I can get in touch with any student. That parent may be able to get in touch with their child immediately from a text, but if you give me thirty to forty-five seconds, I can locate any student on our campus, even at the back of our PE field. I can contact your student with. I can contact your student within 45 minutes, 45 seconds. And I can, if you're checking them out, I can contact them in the classroom. Every teacher that leaves the classroom, they send an email with their cellphone. So if a teacher takes their class, um, to the bus loop, I know that student is in that class, I can contact that teacher's cellphone and we can check students out, we can relay emergencies. So within 30 to 45 seconds, I can reach any student on a campus of 1,500 students.
Thank you. And, yeah, Mr. Carlisle.
If I may, I, I think we, we, um, have a little, you know, obviously with our students, they work after school, they have practices after schools. So I think a lot of what our students are doing, and, and actually I had a, a student that I asked to be on a panel, um, at 3 o'clock, and she needed to let her mom know that she'd be late. So I, I think, I think, you know, we see a little bit different, um, just that by the nature of the age of our students and they work and, and stuff like that. So I think, I, I think they, they need to communicate throughout the day, and that's why we allow them to do it during class changes, lunch, stuff like that.
Understood. Um, okay, I, I'll leave the rest of my comments till later, but thank you, gentlemen, again, appreciate it.
Thank you, guys, for being here. I really appreciate everything that, that you do. I, it was helpful to hear both perspectives of, of how you deal with, uh, cellphones on the daily in your schools. So everything that I have to say are things that, uh, don't, aren't necessarily gonna require answers from, from you guys. And I know you need to get back to your schools, it's, it's really up to the board to make some decisions here. Um, so please, don't stay on my account unless you want to. I just wanted to make that clear, 'cause I know you guys are busy. Yes, I, I, I did bring this forward, I'm gonna start with the ask. And, and my ask is, is that we, uh, deal with cellphones exactly like several middle schools are dealing with them currently, um, Dr. Gary included, um, during summer school. Summer school is a choice. Kids volunteer whether or not to go, um, or their parents volunteer them. They're there for two reasons, which is also why they're supposed to be in school, to learn well, to, to make up their deficiencies and be focused. And if students were accessing their cellphones, um, to get more information about the Library of Congress, there would be no need to be having this conversation. And no one is gonna convince me that cellphones, as currently used by way too many kids, the genie has gone far out of the box, and it's going to be very difficult to put genie back in there. And I love what Board Member Browning mentioned about making, trying to make this an educative opportunity. And the high-performing kids are probably not the ones that, well, I'm not even gonna say that because we have kids, I got a letter, uh, an email from a teacher at a high school and high-performing class, a student basically admitted to being on their cellphones 16 hours a day. And, and all of them were on their cellphones at, at least eight hours a day. And it's, it's become an obsession. And ways to use cellphones for good would be an incredible elective course that would be really fun to teach. Because if we're going to put more boundaries in place about the cellphone behavior, then you have to replace it with something, you know? And the idea of providing more education around appropriate use of cellphones is very, very intriguing. Technology, in my mind, is 100% neutral. It's all in how it's used. And no one can convince me that we don't have a problem in Marion County Public Schools with how cellphones are being used currently. And I visit my schools all the time, I, I go into classrooms, I sit with principals, and I watch and deans the hours that it takes to research problems that have stemmed from social media, that, that start off campus, come onto campus where it can continue because they have access to their phones, and then at lunch, it's on. So we have to do something, and there's a lot we can do, within our capability and our purview and our mission of educating kids and reducing distractions as much as possible to make it to where kids can have the opportunity to do what they come, what they're supposed to be coming to school for. And this is gonna be hard on the adults. If we really put some more boundaries in place for cellphone use, along with an educative piece, because we can be saying all day long that cellphones are supposed to not be seen, but if you walk around a campus, we know that's not happening. We also know that we have teachers that are very new to teaching, and it's just too tempting to make it, uh, a contingent. Do your work and then you can be on your phone. Cellphones have become such an obsession. Don't tell me the kids are not gonna race to get through their work, do shoddy work so they can get back on and see how many likes they got for something, what the latest snap is. It's just too tempting. And, and that's where I, I, I am with this, it extends to the workplace. We have a lot of kids that are not maintaining employment because they can't control their cellphone use. And they're losing their jobs. So isn't it our task to prepare kids for the so-called real world? And self-regulation doesn't just happen. It has to be taught, it has to be reinforced, there has to be boundaries in place. I don't like the idea of kids getting written up for cellphones. And the reason why is because that is such a waste of time, you know? It's a huge time commitment for the deans that are having to write all these referrals. 'Cause trust me, if we put something like this in place, it's gonna be an opportunity to write a lot of referrals. But when I keep hearing about flat screens in, in classrooms and one-to-one communication, you know, with Chromebooks, being able to use other devices to keep all of the innovation of, of technology in a, in a classroom going, which is very important, and I agree with that, to me, those are the replacements for being on their cellphone. Because as a teacher, you can say, "Take out your cellphones and use it for this task that I'm giving you or this activity." But for a teacher to be able to walk around, the, the, and they're supposed to be on their feet and out of their seat, I, you know, trust me, I know all that. But how do you really monitor exactly what those kids are doing, even though you've assigned an activity? Just like, how do you really know if a kid's doing their, their work all the time out of a textbook? You know, it's just too tempting. Maybe that kid is on their cellphone and doing the activity, but then boom, a text pops up or a snap or something. Tell me they're not gonna look at it, you know? And there has just been way too many kids that have come in front of us that have gotten in huge trouble, alternatively placed, expelled, all those things because of things that are happening on social media that get brought onto our campus. I firmly stand by, and then let's just talk about charter schools, because a comment was made that kids are gonna run to charter schools and parents are gonna run to charter schools if, if we get, if we don't, if we get some boundaries around this. TC Matthews from O'Callaghan Charter Middle School stood right in front of us and shared what her cellphone policy is, and it's very much like yours, Dr. Gary. And I visited that school several times, walked through, kids are not on their phones. So obviously, it's being enforced. I have some friends that teach at the Villages Charter Middle School, very high-performing school, Charter High School. Especially at the middle school level, they're really tough on it because they have seen the difference. In my own experience working with kids, I've seen the difference. Would it be a challenge to put more boundaries around this and, and put in the educative piece? Absolutely. But the other interesting thing I wanna raise is that the chatter on social media, parents are getting scared. I'm not seeing parents coming back and saying all this about, "I need to be able to reach my kid instantaneously." I've got, gotten past the part about not having cellphones on campuses at all. I, I think that there's a balance that can be created, but I thought your point, Dr. Gary, was fantastic about that you can reach a kid in 30 to 45 seconds anywhere on your campus. And truly, parents need to remember that if, God forbid, we have an unfolding tragedy, if you try to text your child and your child hasn't put their phone on silent, you might have just given up their safe position.
Right.
So don't do that. We survived just fine without cellphones and social media for a very, very, very long time. I remember the days that we didn't even have telephones in our classrooms, especially out in our portable classrooms. Teachers had to press a button that may or may not have even worked, you know, to get help. We don't need to go back to that, but I am 100% convinced that we need to be the adults here and help our kids maintain the focus that they need to have and learn the expectations that they're going to need to meet out in the real world and be able to focus on what they're doing, to be able to reduce the distractions, begin to become friends again. Social interaction can, I said it earlier, cannot be underemphasized, cannot be overemphasized. That's, to me, what a heartbeat of a school is. So I'll just finish by where I started. My, my ask is, let's put some boundaries in place for summer school, let's get the bang for our buck, let's see what that produces for us, and go from there.
Thank you, uh, Board Member Thor Campbell and, um, Browning. And thank you, guys, um, Dr. Livinggood, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Carlisle, Dr. Gary, for this presentation. We, we started this conversation, I guess, a week or so ago, or two weeks ago, concerning, um, cellphones. And, and we, we, we heard it today. There's different perspectives on how to deal with cellphones at the school level. Um, we saw how, um, Vanguard, uh, Mr. Carlisle's and Vanguard's policy or procedure lines up with the district, and it's in compliance to the district. However, it may be a little bit more, not as restrictive. And then we see, uh, Bellevue Middle Schools and Dr. Gary's, uh, position on it, which still lines up with the district's policy, but is a little bit more restrictive. I, I, I'm, I'm of the inclination that, um, and, and this is probably one of the few times that me and Mr. Bryan just, just kinda on certain pages with certain things. But I agree, cellphones do have a place in school, um, a certain way, a certain way. Few, um, I think it was December, December and June, we were all in a conference, all of us, board members. And to participate in one of the activities in the conference, it required us to do it, pull out our cellphone. Am I, am I, am I talking to myself right?
Absolutely.
All of us did this.
We're adults.
We all did this, and we're all adults. And so cellphones do have a proper use. Um, if you can use it to engage students for educational purposes, there is a place for it. There is a place for it for safety purposes as well. However, I'm leaning, I'm not leaning, I'm with Ms. Thor when it's being used for criminal things or it's being used as a distraction, when it's being used and kids are not, um, are not being able to do what they're supposed to do in school. Too many times, we're seeing videos, we're seeing videos of, of activities in school where a student, another student recorded a incident, clearly violates the policy.
It's right there.
Clearly violates the policy, clearly violates the policy. So I think where we have to be is, we have to kinda put some, we not kinda have to, we have to put some, some restraints on how cellphone usage is gonna be done in the school system. I don't like to see a lot of referrals for, um, a cellphone. I don't think any, any school wants to deal with that many cellphone, uh, referrals. But the evidence is there that it's a small percentage, but it jumps to a bigger percentage, Dr. Livinggood, when it goes to that insubordination. So it's how they're coded, it's how their infraction is coded. So there could be a, a bigger number that had cellphones as the, the catalyst or some part of it when they were, which got minimized because it went to insubordination or went to a fight or went to a riot, whatever. It went to something different. So I think we have to, um, have some consistency across the district on how cellphone use is going to be exhibited on the campuses. I don't think we need to pull anything, any, 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 um, authority or power away from principals in schools because we have an example here of two principals that are making it work at their schools. It depends on leadership, it depends on leadership of the schools. And if this leadership in the school is, is lax with certain things, then it's gonna be lax. If it's, and too lax, and if they have the expectation for the students, then it's gonna be, it's gonna be falling. We see right here where both these schools have a, a good handle on it. So we need to look at how this situation can be, some more boundaries, as Ms. Thor said, I agree. There has to be some boundaries because the evidence is out there. All of us have seen videos of kids fighting on buses and kids fighting in, in all these different things and doing different things on campus, using their cell, cellphone. That completely violates this policy. I, I understand where, and this is where I kinda have issues, where staff will get the, if there's a fight or there's an incident that happens on campus, staff are getting the cellphone footage, from the video footage from the students, that recording it. That's a violation. Technically, that kid should be in trouble just for recording that situation. So we need to work this out, we need to deal with it. I, I personally, my, I send my, I send my, my children to school with a cellphone every day, but I also have a conversation with them too. That if it's in class and they take, and you're out doing something and they take it from you, you gotta deal with me on that situation, the student, not this, not the, not the, not the, not the school, not the, it's, the student has to deal with me. Um, so parents have to, it has to be, again, this has to be a collaboration with the parents and the stu, and the schools and having the expectations for the students on what's gonna be good and what's not gonna be good. We, we don't want our latchkey kids getting off the bus and they're walking down the road and they can't call mom and say, "Mom, I'm home, I'm, I'm in the house," or whatever. We're in a different age, we're definitely in a different age. So let's look at how we can put some boundaries in place, I think, is what Ms. Thor was asking for, correct?
Well, I'm asking that we lead by example, you know? Kids model adult behaviors. And this, to me, is an opportunity for our whole community to get involved in this initiative for this summer. And really work on reducing our time on cellphones, increasing our times communicating and collaborating with each other. I feel like summer school is the perfect time to do it. We're not gonna have 43,000 kids running around, we're gonna have, you know, seven or eight or 10,000 kids running around that, that want to get their driver's licenses, that know they need to recover credits, that want to pass that algebra or geometry so they don't have to take it in high school. You know, we've got a full array of opportunities for our kids. So let's help them really be able to take advantage of it. And this is gonna be, I know what I'm asking for, trust me, I do. It's going to be an incredibly heavy lift. If we tried to do this, like, right now, starting next week, it'd be a disaster. So my ask is, let's try it in summer school, we still have plenty of time to communicate it out there, we can talk about.
You, you know, but just articulate, tell us what this ask is specifically, um, so that we'll know what, what we're looking for. I just, I heard, I heard boundaries, I heard boundaries, but what type of boundaries?
Well, first of all, I ask that we enforce our, our policy here. Uh, we, we know that the unauthorized recording and photographing of employees, actually, employees show up on TikTok all the time. They didn't know that they were being filmed, you know? So, okay, what it would look like in real time? What I have witnessed in different schools is that the cellphones are off, they're in their book bags or their purse or whatever, and they're lined up against the wall in the classroom. Um, you know, teachers have all ways of, of being able to, to monitor and manage. I'm not talking about micromanaging that deep. As, as a teacher, for me, I would probably just have a baggie and their kid would, kid would put it in and put it in my basket while I stood at the door when they walk in. But that's me, you know, um, having them in a bookbag or not being visible, you know, there's 100 ways to do it. But they're not gonna be out, you know? Buses, that's a whole nother situation because, um, that's a lot harder to, to monitor. We've got kids that are, we've got drivers that just need to drive. But to me, that is such a danger on the road that if a, if a bus driver is distracted trying to tell a kid to stop filming someone else and they get in a wreck, so, and that... and they get in a wreck, so, and that type of situation, you know, a warning and then the kid loses the opportunity to ride the bus, in, in my opinion, for summer school. You know, after they get a warning. Like I said, otherwise the inmates are going to keep running the asylum.
Mr. Bryan?
Yes, okay, all right, workshop, we're in a workshop. This isn't criticism, okay, we're, we're expanding ideas, we're thinkers here. All right. I'm hearing so much negativity. I'm hearing so much negativity. I would like to hear a balance. I want to hear the positive nature of what we have. We're talking about an educational organization, not a disciplinary organization. We operate, Dr. Gary, I, I've, I've seen it. They're able, students are able to walk up and talk, they're, they feel free, they feel comfortable. This is a positive thing, this is not a negative thing. Now, could anything get five standard deviations out from the mean? Sure, it's, it's inherent in the system. But we're dealing with the bulk, the, the center, the mean of a bell curve. It's all positive, all. Yes, you have to have structure, you have to have it. I, I'm, I'm reminded of the fact that cell phones, cell phones are literally a thing of the past if you want to, if you want to really get down to the technology. I have a car in the parking lot, I can call anyone in the world. If I have the number, I can call the governor without touching anything. We have police officers that can communicate around the state, around the world, without touching anything. It is not a negative situation, we've got to think this way, we got to think positively. We got to think that when we get out, we aren't trying to hold people down, students down, we're trying to expand it out and we're trying to educate and create opportunities. The, the nature, oh, you guys got to go? Okay, hey, thanks. I hope some of this, I hope some of it helps or pays off in your thinking. And please, either of you, call us, communicate, because we're setting policy and it comes from you all in there, in a, in a, in a, in a critical learning situation. I mean, you're, you're the troops on the ground. And so you understand it. And there are two sides to everything and certainly the bigger part of the bell curve is like two standard deviations in N. That's really where I want to be. Yeah, if you got a perpetrator out here, just deal with them, if that makes sense. Okay, thank you all for coming and your, your input. Thank you, Chair.
I'm going to have, like I got some public comment, Mr. Frazier, go ahead.
I, I just have one additional thing that I wanted to share, actually some more information. We had an opportunity to meet with a representative, a student representative from every high school through a Zoom meeting where we asked, garnered some feedback from some of our students as well. All of them were either, we have one sophomore, a couple of juniors, and the rest were seniors. But I wanted to just provide some of the feedback that they gave us too as well. And one of the things that they, they made a statement on is they wanted me to make sure that I voiced the opinion that there are a lot of our students that are doing the right things and aren't misusing cell phones and that that should be a consideration as well. So I'll just preface that because that was coming from them, but I do have some of their comments as well that I recorded down. And so, one of our students reported that having a cellphone is a, is a matter of safety. Now, this is a student perspect, perspective, this is not us as adults. Students reported that having a cellphone is a matter of safety for not only them, but peace of mind of their parents to know that they can track their location through apps like Life360. They expressed that it's important for parents to be able to reach them in event of emergency. One of our other students reported there, there are many students throughout our high schools that are utilizing cell phones to track their blood sugar levels due to medical issues that they have. All of our students reported that their phones are educational tools to allow them to get notifications from teachers and assignments about grades. And other students reported that one of them uploads all of her assignments to Canvas from her phone. They also reported that the vast majority of their classes have some sort of online component that they utilize with Canvas. When we asked them about the problems with students posting videos to social media, they gave us a very unique perspective and they said that, they reported that students create burner accounts that are not tied to anything but anonymous email addresses and that way they post anything to social media without fear of consequences. And how that it would be virtually impossible for us to track those because they download and utilize VPNs to be able to accomplish that. One of the students stated that they use apps like Remind and Slack to communicate directly with club members, with their teacher sponsors, about meetings that may be impromptu or, or coming about. One of our clever students from Forest High School, actually, whenever we asked him his opinion, he said, "Well, hang on just a second. I want to reference my notes that are on my phone," and went through that. And then students all expressed a passion for cell phones, that they're an integral part of society and that if parents would, if parents would help monitor what their students were doing on, that they would reduce some of the, the issues that are coming onto campuses that are occurring off campus as well. So that's just our students' perspective as well. But I think it's important whenever we are discussing, you know, things that we may potentially put into place, that we consider those, those voices and factors as well because it's directly going to impact them. And Ms. Thor, I know that you were directly referencing summer school, but I do want to make just one point in regards to as we consider our code of conduct revisions and we start looking at cellphone policies. I do truly believe that Dr. Gullott is leading Marion County out of the bottom third of the state in regards to our student achievement data. I truly believe that and I'm honored to be a part of that team. But I, we've put a very strong emphasis this year on really having our educators and specifically our administrators be instructional leaders and be in the classrooms to build capacity of our educators, to make sure that we are meeting the needs of every single student on Marion County schools. And when we, you, you referenced the, the genie is too far out of the bottle and, and that is the point where, when we're considering improving student achievement in all data, if administrators are constantly going after students to handle disciplinary infractions because of, due to cellphone usage, what, what will be that impact on instruction?
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Ms. Slaughter?
Couple of things. First off, I think it would be a better efficient use of the board's time when you have principals that are going to testify or talk about something, to call them first and to not make them sit through the most, I mean, I'm sure you guys got a lot of it, but the, the mind-numbing things that I had to sit through this morning is not an efficient use of the principal's time. They should be called up if they have to talk about something like this and then sent back to their school. Sending them here all morning is, is, is a waste of time. I mean, in my opinion, you guys do what you want. As far as the cellphone issue, my problem with the policy is anybody on any school campus can search any kid's cellphone at any time, at any point, for any reason whatsoever. And that is ridiculous. That is absolutely ridiculous. If my son's walking down a hallway and his phone is in his backpack, if a teacher goes to him and says, "I want you to unlock that cellphone so I can look at it," and he says, "No," that's gross insubordination and he can be expelled. That is not the way that this school board should be operating. I'm trying to teach my children respect for the Constitution and to respect their traditions in this country. And when you give them zero rights to, to say, "No, you cannot search my cellphone," then you are, you are opening yourself up for a major world of problem. And if, if the school, if you guys want to come to a school board meeting with no cellphone and you want to tell teachers you can't use cellphone during a class when people are taking a test and you want to tell principals you can't have a cellphone, then I think you can tell these kids not to have one. I think the problem is when everybody that they see uses a cellphone all the time, you cannot tell them they can't use a cellphone in school or they can't have a cellphone in school. I just think you're setting yourself up to be a hypocrite and to have these kids tune you out because they don't see you doing what you're asking them to do. If you say to them, when you come to class, here's a, here's a, here's a clear folder with one through 10 on it, hanging on the wall, made out of plastic, "My phone's number one. Everybody in my summer school class has got a number. Everybody put your phone here. When we're in class, my phone's there and your phone's there." I'm all for that, okay? I'm all for that. That's a way to take attendance, everybody's following the same rules. I don't think the kids would have a problem with that. But you're going to have a major problem when you're asking kids not to be on a phone or not to bring them and their teacher's sitting there during the test on her phone checking her email and doing it, which is fine. I mean, she's an adult, okay? But you've got to learn and show them by example. And I think that's the, that, I mean, I have a major problem with searching the phone. I had one of my son's friends get her phone searched because of an allegation that was made of something that happened off campus and nothing was on her phone, but her phone was searched through. And you are opening yourself up for liability and your attorney will tell you that. If you get the wrong person searching a, a child's phone and they screenshot a picture of like my fourteen-year-old daughter in her bikini and then shoot it on the internet, you're going to get sued for that. Because you've allowed an employee of the Marion County Public School System to access a minor and publish their picture and there's going to be nothing you can do about it. Okay, so I mean, I think we need to think about the, the underlying consequences of all this stuff when we make these kind of rules. And I think if you show by example, that's what, you know, when I don't want my kid on the phone during dinner, I don't have my phone out. I, I talk to my children during dinner because I'm not on a phone. And that's the way that they, they know that, they know that I'm not doing that. If I was sitting there on my phone, I could not tell them, "Don't use your phone." I mean, they're not going to listen to that. So I think we should lead by example if we want the kids to not use them all the time.
Attorney Slaughter? Listen, thank you. You hit the one contention that I've had with this policy since I've been on the board. I think I've expressed it several times to others in code of conduct reviews. And that is that, that refusal to allow search of electronic devices would be considered gross insubordination. I, I have an issue, and I've, I've said this before, on how we gather information and confiscate people's phone and then go through the phone and look through things. I have an issue with that, I've always said I had an issue with that. And because the cellphone that my son has is my cellphone. So if someone confiscates his cellphone or tells, or takes his phone, my instructions to him is that, "They're not so search your phone because it's my phone." And a lot of times we're doing, I feel that we, I've said this before, so this is nothing new. I think that sometimes we go overboard. I think there's a way to search phones, I think there's a way to get the stuff out. And, and, but I think it needs to be done. These are still kids and I don't want us to be violating our kids' rights or anybody's rights. So I thank you for bringing that forward as well. And you are right, we do need not be hypocrites when it comes to how we're going to deal with these cell phones. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Slaughter, and, and I believe that's exactly what I shared, is that, you know, adults have to be the role models for kids. And I don't think that there's an adult sitting in this room that can honestly say that they know they're on their cellphone probably more than they need to be. It's because it's that much of a draw. So why don't we just admit it? And do something about it.
Right, and I don't have a problem with that. I just think that, that if you're going to set a policy, it needs to be something like, I think Ms. Campbell was talking about, where your phone is slid in a slot when you go into a classroom and that's where it is, because we know where it is. Then you're not sneaking it out, there's no temptation, you know where it is, you have your number. When class is over, you pull your cellphone out, you go about your business. I mean, I don't think anybody would have a problem with that. I just think it needs to be something like that, not that kids can't use phones. I mean, my son texts me from his room, "Can I have a drink of water?" I mean, it's crazy the way that they do stuff like that, you know? And that's why we have to ban phones after ten o'clock in the house and put them downstairs where everybody knows where they are and they can't have them in their rooms because they would be on them all the time. I mean, but those are parental issues that you guys aren't really involved in. I just think for classroom purposes, I think it needs to be consistent. Everybody puts their cellphone right there when they go in, everybody pulls them out when they get out. Then they're not using them in class. I think a lot of parents, like myself, track their kids on Life360. I know where they are all the time. If they go out, if they go off school grounds, I get an alert. If they, if they're not leaving the house when they're supposed to, to drive themselves to school, my oldest son, I get an alert. I know where everything is, I want him to have that phone. I mean, I want him to have it so that I know where he is and I know that he's in school when he's supposed to be. So, you know, I mean, I think you've got to balance it with that.
Yes, ma'am, and, and that's exactly what I said. I was the one that said, hey, if you're a teacher, you know, you have a basket at the door or, or have it in the bookbags, have a, have a procedure. It's, it's not that big a deal, you know? We can, we can talk ourselves out of doing what's best for kids all day long. But to me, it's very simple. And, and it's doing the simple things well and with consistency that's going to help our kids navigate. And you're absolutely spot on that it comes from the leadership and then it comes down to adults and it comes also to our parents. No, we don't have control over what happens in the home, but we can certainly build relationships and share some best practices, you know? That's what parent empowerment is all about, you know? Working together and this is a, it's a common problem. It's not just in school, it's at the mall, it's everywhere. So I just wish that we could acknowledge it and put something simple in place, give it a go and see how we feel about it. And it's going to be tough.
And, and you and I don't understand what it's like to be five and six and seven and have a cellphone and have an iPad and have all these devices to have access to, is the problem. I mean, they have grown up with this stuff. And it's not the same thing when you disconnect somebody that's had it their entire life and had access. I mean, my, my brother's got a two-year-old who is, can, can get on his cellphone and put a video on, and the kid's two. I mean, it's, it's, it, it's just, to me, I, I don't even know what that's like growing up like that. So I just think we have to look at it from the perspective of, it's going to be a much, you know, the, the ultimate punishment in my household is to take their cellphone away. If I tell them their cellphone's gone, that's the worst punishment they could possibly have. It's like, you know, if they lose their cellphone for a week, that's a nightmare to them. So I, I think they're going to look at it as a punishment. And I don't think they're going to look at it as you're intending them to look at it. So I think we've just got to structure it in a way where educationally wise, they don't have it, but if they have it at school during lunch, after school, when they're waiting to go to practice or whatever it is, I don't think that should be an issue that we get involved in.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Wow, you, you touched on so many great things and, and due process is one of them. Cell phones will come and go, but due process won't. And I, 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 I hear in almost every conversation, the positive nature. This is not a negative thing, it's a positive thing. Otherwise, it wouldn't be in everyone's hand. It wouldn't be at, at the center of our, our, our society. It's not the phone, it's policy, it's teaching, it's opportunity. It, it was those letters, those comments from a student. Every one of those comments that were brought up were on the positive side. That's what we're trying to generate, was what those students were, were communicating. So it's a big deal. And, and when we get, if, if we're going to get best practices, we've got to take best practices from the families, from the community, and we've got to correct our school. See, our school isn't the, the, the answer, the district isn't the answer. The, the district, like any other organization, has to evolve and learn and grow and we are not a juvenile detention center. We're not. That may sound extreme, but if you're one of these students and you're being searched, it's the same thing as being in a juvenile detention center. So we, we've just got to be really, really careful and go on the side of education. Everyone, every one of those comments from the kids, from the students, were on the positive side and we can all learn from that. Those were best practices. Those are things that we can benefit from setting policy. It wasn't about referrals, it was about information. It wasn't about referrals, it was about something positive, empowering those kids. And thank you for bringing that forward. Wow, that was exactly what this conversation needed, was input from the student.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, you guys have a good day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Slaughter. I would just like to bring your attention to the search procedures we have, just to clarify for the record. We actually, and thank you, Ms. Slaughter, to your, for your state.
We actually, um, and thank you, Ms. Slaughter, to your, um, for your statement. I just want to, on the record, make sure everyone is aware of the loco prentice. If you turn to page five of your secondary Code of Student Conduct, it does read that, um, "The state and federal law recognizes that teachers and school administrators have a, have a need to stand in the place of parents over children entrusted to them at school." This is, this concept is loco prentice. While this power is not equal to a parent's power over a child, it does permit school personnel to exercise a degree of supervision and control over students that could not be exercised over adults. With this, the second portion of that does state that school officials, um, do have the right to search, um, a student if they have reasonable suspicion. This has to be documented, even every packet that has come before you. We have to have a reason that a student or their possession, what they're in possession of, has, there's a reason to search. So I just wanna put that on record. Um, everything that is confiscated is not searched.
Thank you, Dr. Livinggood. And you're, that, that is on the books, but I do also know of incidences where, um, that has not been the case.
Okay.
And that's, that's what I speak to. Um, not, one, one or two bad actors can make it bad for everybody. And, and, and I don't like the bad actors that make it bad for the good people that's doing it by the book. That's my concern.
Thank you.
Attorney Powers?
I, I would just add briefly to the conversation that, um, in county court, they have a specific, the, the judges rotate dealing with, um, sexting issues, for example, under Florida statute. And that is something that can cause students quite a bit of, um, concern if there's inappropriate conversations that are happening with their cellphones. In addition, taking and sharing photographs, um, depending upon the age, depending on what's shown, can also run students afoul of child pornography laws. Um, we also have the Florida statute 934, which I know most students don't know about, because most adults don't know about, which is that secretly audio recording someone without their consent is a third-degree felony punishable by five years in prison and a $5,000 fine. And then every single time that audio recording that was secretly taken is shared, it's another third-degree felony. Um, these are all issues that, among the positivity and among the how we can do things for the benefit of education, there comes also a, a portion of which our responsibility would be to inform students of the ways in which they can easily run afoul of, of things with cellphone use. So, sure, uh, the, the technology in and of itself is not, is not good or evil, but there are certainly things that can be, I, I, I think that when we're talking about the positive use of Canvas and Skyward and all these things that can be hap, used with cellphones and mobile technology, um, it's also incumbent that if we're gonna engage in those conversations, we also make it clear that there are a number of risks, and very, very significant risks, um, legal risks, in addition to just the life-changing risks of things that, once you publish something in high school, there, we see in the news every day, people that, um, publish something when they're 16. They make stupid decisions and say things on social media, and then they try to get into a nice college later, and they, they can't get in, you know?
Or a job.
Or a job. They have now social media, I mean, people who actually scour your social media for the past five years just to see, "Are you a candidate?" "No, we don't really like what you've said on social media." I don't think at age 16, with brains not fully formed and developed yet, that they're, that they're even beginning to know this.
Thank you, Attorney Powers, because, and, you know, this conversation about, it's always the right thing to do to increase instructional opportunity for our kids, to increase time on task, so to speak, to, to increase focus. We know that bullying and mental health in speaking with students are huge concerns. They have huge concerns about their friends and how they're doing. They care about each other. But when you're carrying the bully in your pocket everywhere you go, and you never get a break from it, that's, makes life pretty difficult for kids. And when I think about, of course, kids are gonna come up with all kinds of wonderful reasons why they have to have their cellphones with them all the time. Did we really expect anything less? And as far as tracking for diabetes, to me, that just screams 504 plan, you know? Um, the kid that leaves class every day at noon to go take their meds, every, the kids all know why they're leaving class, you know? They, they know that stuff. So to me, those are those unique outliers where, where we can plan, you know, for that. But if you're talking about moving the middle, and if you're looking for evidence that high-performing schools use to help kids be successful and remain focused, I think the evidence is, is all there. I'm not saying no cellphones at school. It's, I think I said that in the beginning because I was just so frustrated a couple mi, meetings ago. But after having conversations with administrators and leaders and hearing about a really cool app called Hero that can, um, be very helpful in, in this initiative, you know, there's just too many great possibilities. And for something that has such deep and broad implications to kids and their learning, that's why we're sitting here, you know? And, and I think that's why we're all here. To acknowledge, what do kids really need to be able to remain focused, to be successful, to be able to get along well with each other, to be able to maximize their opportunities, to have good outcomes post-school? And how, how do we teach them to help avoid the pratfalls of, of social media, for example? You know, um, I think about how much more time that would be gained in an instructional day if kids were not constantly checking their phones. If we had something as simple as that wall, um, unit that Ms. Slaughter was referencing, or, or a simple basket, or keeping them in their bookbags and just having them be parked at a certain place in the classroom. Just, just not accessible during those times. And, and I don't think I'm in agreement about lunch either. That's, it, it's those transition times. It's those less supervised times where things, those plans and things like that are, are made. And I go to Fort King Middle School, and I'll, you know, that's a crowded school, it's an old cafeteria. It is loud. But they're not, it's not badly loud. It's just kids chattering to each other because they're not allowed to be on their cellphones during lunch. So they're actually interacting with each other. So there's precedence to do this. What it really comes down to is, do we have the wherewithal to take a stand? But I, I know I've said a lot. I'm sure at this point, everybody knows exactly where I stand on this topic. So I guess I just leave it to the rest of the board and, and to our superintendent to help make a decision on, on how we're gonna proceed.
So I think I am where Ms. Thrower is. Um, I, I'll just offer a bit of anecdotal information. First of all, on the positive side, Mr. Brownie's not here to hear it, but on the positive side, I, I completely understand that the vast majority of students, on the whole, are using their cellphones appropriately and not doing the inappropriate things that we've been talking about. They're probably not unauthorized audio recording and probably not recording whatever might be, and, uh, possibly not. I mean, but even well-intentioned students can potentially have their cellphones as a babysitting tool after they're done with their work in class. Nevertheless, I also appreciate that we did get the student perspective. Thank you, Mr. Frazier, for that. But I, I question it a bit just to say that probably the students chosen for a survey are probably also those students that wouldn't be causing the issues. So I mean, while I appreciate it, it wasn't an anonymous survey, and it was only seven students, one from each height. So I mean, I appreciate the perspective, and thank you for that. It, it actually does offer insight. But those are probably the students who are in our advanced placement classes, and their teachers are appropriately incorporating cellphone usage in their curriculum, potentially. Um, I will speak to my own personal experience, teaching a class in the fall and teaching a class in the spring. My class in the fall didn't have a cellphone policy. Those students oftentimes were on their cellphones while students were delivering speeches. And one thing about being an engaged, uh, audience is, is actually imperative to being a good speaker as well. So my spring class didn't, I had a cellphone policy. You can thank my fall class for that. It, it's kind of how I did it, and you cannot have your cellphones out in class. The students that I just had were incredibly engaged. All of the students at the end of the class, we talked about the things, and they've all advanced in their communication skills. They've all used it in personal, you know, it's, a, all of that has been helpful to them. And I'm gonna say in part because they actually listened to everything their fellow classmates did whenever they were delivering presentations. Uh, that's in part, I would, I would say, a part of that. So I mean, I've done this myself as an instructor, so I wanna, you know, encourage our teachers. It can be done. It really can be. Where I am with this, um, first of all, thank you to Ms. Slaughter for bringing out that one part to this, because I also would like to, uh, to Reverend Cummings' point, and, and also a bit to Attorney Powers, uh, the unauthorized record, not that part, the search and seizure. I, I am still a little, that part of the policy honestly has not been where I've been focused so much today. Uh, but I, I think we might need to take a, a second look at that, and, and maybe in Code of Conduct or whenever this comes back around to see if there is something that we need to do there. Um, but I really like the idea of having some kind of shoe rack or something. And, and I like Ms. Slaughter's point that the teacher puts their phone in first at the beginning of the class. Maybe it's in class changes. You can pull your phone out real quick and check whatever messages happen. Get your, "Okay, everybody now put your cellphones in the shoe rack," or whatever. It doesn't have to be a shoe rack. I'm not micromanaging to that degree. Uh, but something like that, that yes, you know where your cellphone is, yes, you can be accessible if need be, uh, but it is put away, and, and having students with earbuds in and, and listening to music the whole time the teacher, how do you know that's not happening? Because it's happening. It's like the old commercial, "It's happening, sweetheart." Um, so I, I think there are ways that we can address this. Definitely not saying no cellphones in school, uh, but in, ensuring that we're not contributing to students' addictions. And, and frankly, we don't allow students to vape. We don't allow them to do other things that are addictive. And cellphones and social media usage is addicted. Well, I mean, we're all, as a gener, as the entire generation. It's an addiction, and, and we're not addressing it as such, and at some point, I think there actually will be, um, some therapies and things that, that are developed because of the cellphone addictions that people have and the social media addictions that happen, which contributes to then Attorney Powers', uh, point about statute. And, and I believe that would be a real quick civics lesson that we need to add to our seventh-grade curriculum, maybe just a one-day something in the civics classes, talking about media literacy and talking about these statutes that are cellphone, I mean, that brings civics curriculum to relevancy to students. Whenever they can start seeing, uh, what actually laws and legislation has done to regulate things that they may not even be aware of. And, and that's when you actually bring that legislative branch to real reality for them in civics lessons and media literacy and so forth. I think that would be a great incorporation, uh, not trying to expand what the law has already said, but just educate them on what the law is, uh, and, and what those potential punishable things are, but not just punishable. I'm not trying to take it to the punitive side. Um, I'm, I'm trying to say that we have laws in place for a reason. And, and so laws are to keep you within a boundary, and only the people that go beyond that boundary are the ones that ha, have the punitive action against them. So as long as you have that boundary, uh, then it gives you at least a, a space that you can operate in a positive nature. Um, so that's where I am. I, I don't know if there, I have no idea how much, like, something would cost if there were teachers that wanted, you know, if we were incorporating this in the, in the summer, to start there, uh, to try to have cellphones away. I mean, I, I know that I walked on an elementary school bus last week, and a student, principal, trying to get all the students' attention, students back there on their cellphones. I mean, I, they're certainly not on their earbuds and following policy. They're having their phone out and letting their friends see something. That's against policy, the way this is written. Um, and, and I've been on a middle school campus recently where students were trying to record a TikTok during lunch. Um, I don't know if that's against their administrators, but, so, there, there's some procedures there that I, you know, we obviously heard from two different principal voices today. We have a lot of leniency in some. Middle school is gonna vary middle school to middle school. And, and I understand giving the autonomy to the principal. Uh, but I dare say that it's potential that we could look at some of the additional issues that we've been experiencing on some of our campuses and contribute some of that to cellphone usage, which is why I asked Mr. Carlisle directly, "If you had seen cellphones, yes, not be the infraction, but actually it contribute to the insubordination or the whatever else." Um, and so it may not be recorded as a cellphone violation because it actually resulted in a much greater infraction, is how it was coded. So, um, that's where I am. I, I am pretty much with Ms. Thrower. We've gotta do something. I, I, and I think this would cause us to be leading this, the state, to do something uh, that would be, um, different, uh, to, than what we're doing right now, uh, that would enhance student learning and ensure that they do have an, an appropriate educational environment to empower teachers to know that if they wanna utilize technology, hopefully they have it now in their classrooms, whether it's a possibly smart boards or the Chromebooks or something. Hopefully, they have the technological advances in their classrooms to be able to bring that technology into their education of the students uh, without it having to be at the students' fingertips in a small little rectangle uh, that the student then could be using in other ways that the, the teacher would not have a, a way of knowing that. The, the challenge, so last thing I'll say. The challenge, and I have this on my own kids' phones, you know, you can shut their phones down during the school day. You can limit, you know, whenever they have access to certain, you can limit the social media that. You can do all of that from a parent perspective. But what, as a school district, we can't limit what kids are doing because they're on a Verizon plan or AT&amp;T plan or Sprint plan or whatever they're on. And so that's based on the plan and what the, you know, what the parameters are. But on a Chromebook, we can. We know what they're going to and what they're not going to. And, and they can't be posting to social media on their Chromebook. I, I mean, so if, if we, if, I, I understand that cellphones are where we are in society. Totally get that. Totally get that we as adults are also completely addicted. We are way too available. If you're getting texts at 3:00 in the morning and answering them, that's a problem. Again, I really do believe there will be therapies in place for social media and cellphone addictions. Uh, but all of that availability comes also that lack of face-to-face communication and dialogue that I am so, uh, so much of, uh, an advocate for and just believe that a lot of our relationship and dialogue issues that we're having as a society would be worked out a lot more if we did a lot more of this and a lot less of this. So, that's all I'm gonna say.
And I, I, we really need to move on, but I wanna give this final comment on this. I have been at schools where they have, um, in this district where the teacher has like a little cubby hole for, wooden cu, cubby hole that they, kids have to, when they walk in their classroom, they have to slide their phone in that cubby hole, and they can get it on their way out. So that, that is an easy thing to do. There's a cost involved.
Sure.
If you're talking about outfitting every school, every classroom with those, but the cost could be very minimal depending on how we get it done, who does it. Um, there's a, there's a legal aspect to that as well. 'Cause if, and, and this is what I saw. I saw some kids put their phones in the cubby hole, but I saw another kid at the end of the class pull someone else's phone out of the cubby hole. And does that mean that the school is now responsible for that phone? Why? Because we took possession of that phone during school time. That's a legal aspect of it. And then the other part of that that I also think about is, "Okay, I give you my phone. I can give you, Ms. Campbell, my phone right now, and it appears to be off. However, I still have my watch on. I can still make phone calls. I can still listen to music. I can still text. I can still do whatever I need to do, and the phone, you have, you're in possession of my phone, and I'm still doing whatever I need to do on the phone." So I hear this conversation. I understand this conversation. Completely understand it. I understand that we need to do anything we can to, to remove distractions away from kids and temptations away from kids so that we can educate it. I just pray that how we approach this, how we do this, that we do it in such a way that we don't draw any undue, uh, ramifications on us as a district, you know? Because if, if, if Timmy says he put an iPhone in there, but when he goes back to his cubby, he pulls out an Android phone, if I'm Timmy's father, I'm gonna be pissed. But when he goes back to his cubby, he pulls out an Android phone, if I'm Timmy's father, I'm gonna be pissed. Cause he ain't got his iPhone that I paid a thousand dollars for. Uh, y'all understand where I'm at? And so we have a lot of things to consider when we're talking about this. Yes, sir.
Thank you Chair. Um, Dr. Gullett, I, I feel like we're sort of at the point where, um. It's been conveyed by everyone that there is concern and, and agreement that, that it is important. To provide the right example and instructional, I, under the best ideal conditions that we can provide. That's our task. At this point, I would love to get more information on the operational side of the practical application. Of how this would work. Like I said, I'm a big fan of just keeping things simple. And it's pretty cheap to go out and get a shoe holder or, or a basket with a Ziploc bags. Where kids put their name on them or little boxes that they decorate themselves. Sure, they're gonna take it as a punishment in the beginning. Who really likes to be told no? Nobody. But when it's in the best interests of kids and promoting learning and getting us to that top 10%. This is where the tough decisions get made. And, and I hope in the end that, as so often happens, kids circle back around and say, I hated you at the time, but now I understand and I appreciate it. But again, the practical applications and I, and I think the folks to go to would be the ones that are already doing, um, at schools where they have things in place. And, and it's being accepted, you know, by kids. I'm not ready to let go of, uh, as cellphone-free summer as possible in, in our schools. I think it's time.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, so, great opportunity here. This is really, as I, as I'm hearing this, it's procedural. It's not policy. It isn't policy at all. And the negative nature, if you were a cellphone developer, you were Tim Cook sitting here. You'd say, what are these people talking about? Cellphones aren't bad. It's like cars aren't bad. And you can't micromanage these things. Uh, I would like to have, uh, I know it's public, public record and I can get it off TV, but I'd like to have a copy of those students', um, comments. I thought they were brilliant. The idea that we would, uh, that this is all negative, i- i- it, or an addiction. I would just make the case that education is an addiction, but it's not a bad thing. Education is something we strive for. We go for it. We're obsessive compulsive learners. That's what we are as a species. You've gotta see the positive side of things and not characterize it as negative. From my perspective, if you're going to carry that sacred, uh, duty of education. Because it's all on the positive side and almost zero on the negative side. Now, I'm the first one to say, yes, you have to have law and order. Insubordination, that means not following an order. I, you know, no, none of these kids are in the service. None, none of them. That's like not following an order. This gentleman could tell you about not following an order or following an order. That's insubordination. This other business is like a, a, an easy way to, to give a referral. To kind of start labeling. There isn't anybody on this board that got referrals. To my way of thinking, I'd be very surprised. Referrals is going up, yeah, you got sent to the principal's office, in my case, quite often. But that's all right. You, you learn, you grow, you develop. And insubordination? Are you kidding me? Come on, these words are just not good. They're just not good. Reverend Cummings, uh, touches on it with every time he makes a statement. And he comes into a, a reality zone. And that reality zone has to do with freedom. And freedom is addictive. It's built into our souls. We are free people and nobody is going to control us. Freedom is in the constitution. It's, and that's what we gotta teach the kids. Phones, if everybody's using them. We, we just can't lean on kids and criminalize it, even intellectually, even lightly. We've got to be careful with this. And, and let's just go down this road. Let's have more of these discussions because, boy, I'm heartened. I am really encouraged by every single discussion I've heard, every comment, every perspective. It really, really matters. And if we don't have these conversations, we miss the boat. We miss the boat. So let's, don't miss the boat. Let's, whatever that metaphor is, let's, let's get on to victory. Let's educate. Let's do the right thing. And I'm not afraid of something going a little awry because we've got the superintendent, we've got principals. We've got a whole cadre of people that can set policy. And if it's not quite right, adjust it. And it, you know, i- i- that's, that's the answer. Not policy from this board that's gonna micromanage. That's good, that's bad. Poor Mr. Morrow would be out of business if technology was bad. It's not bad. It could be used bad, I suppose, like an automobile. But, so with that said, wow.
Superintendent and Ms. Thrower and Board Members, let's do this. Let's explore, let me back up. Let me hear what you have to say ma'am first, before I say what I need to say.
Yes, okay. Thank you Chair.
Then we're gonna wrap this part of this up because we need to move on.
Yes, thank you. Um, I appreciate hearing the discussion about this. And I think we all agree this is a much more complex issue than it seems on the surface. I know that we are all committed to doing what's best for students and doing what's best in their, um, education with us. As I see it, there's a current policy in place. And you heard from some outstanding school principals earlier that gave very different examples of how the policy is being, um. Conducted and supported in procedure. And so we, I, I, the whole time you're talking, I keep reading, rereading through, um, even slide two, um, in our current policy. So I do think it comes back to us going back to our leaders and talking about the procedures. And how we can enforce the current policy in a positive way for good, for the students, for their benefit. I think it includes something about training and conversation with students. And better understanding our intention and hearing from them as Mr. Fraser, um, provided information. Engaging them in this conversation and the work forward. We do have an opportunity coming up to provide an updated recommendation. And we have board representation on that committee as well for the, for the code of student conduct moving forward. And I think this is a good time to go back and again, review any changes if needed that might be proposed to the language. But as I see it, it's about conversation and communication and intent. Not just what we want to do, but what we, what we expect to happen as an outcome. So that's, um, that's where I stand right now.
Thank you Superintendent. That's where I would like to put it at, Board Members. Put it back into the hands of those who are doing some of those things that we just spoke about at length. And let them kind of work it out. The Code of Conduct Committee, Dr. Livinggood and her team. And let's figure out the best way to do, to have cellphones on campus. Cause they're not gonna go away. And I can tell you this, if you were to ban cellphones, just say, they're not gonna be here. I promise you they'd be more on campus. Cause they will sneak them on campus. I've seen it. I've seen it. In the prison, we took out cigarettes. And guess what? We had more cigarettes. Took out cellphones. Guess what? They got cellphones.
Prohibition, prohibition just brought out alcohol. That's what it did.
So when you, when you demonize it, i- it's, it's gonna be, it's kids will find a workaround. So let's figure out how to do it in a positive way and, um, satisfy the goal of education. Cause the biggest goal is education. It's not about them using their phone. It's about them not being extractive while they're getting their education. So if we're in, if we're in agreement, we can put it back into the hands of Superintendent. Their team, they'll bring it back, whatever, and, and let us know.
Chair, I'm at a hundred percent in agreement with that. That is why we look for competency in selecting a superintendent. That is exactly where it takes place.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Gullett and Board.
Any other public comments concerning cellphones? There've been, guys, we have, we have one, two, we have several issues. We have to have a hard stop before three o'clock because there's a ICROC meeting that we have to be at. And that I have to be at. And, um, I don't think some of the conversation that we need to have is without a full board. So I want to kind of get through these as best we can with Dr. Hembrook and the early, name of the Early Learning Academy. Florida Schools Board Association dues. That should be relatively fast. And then our comments. So I'm not gonna, if we can, we're not gonna take a break. If you gotta go do what you gotta do, but let's continue to move forward.
Keep going.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Superintendent Gullett, Ms. Prestapino and Attorney Powers. As you know, we are thrilled about opening up a school that's gonna focus on early learning. And Ms. Beck and myself and other school, um, district administrators, as well as community representatives, Division of Early Learning. We're working on that process and finalizing those details. And we are now at the time where it's time to name that school. And so based on current school board policy, eight point five four, we're following that policy and we're going through that process. I'm gonna, um, turn it over to Ms. Beck and she's gonna share with you some of those specifics and your role in that as well.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Hembrook. So today, we're just going to provide a very brief overview of where we are in the naming process. So at the upcoming May twenty-fourth board meeting, an item is being placed on the agenda. Where, uh, there will be a formal announcement of the board's intention to name our Early Learning Academy or facility. On May tw- from May twenty-fifth, after that announcement takes place, from May twenty-fifth to June third. That is where as MCPS, we want to host several opportunities for our parents, community members, can be employees. We encourage all to participate in, uh, making suggestions for what our new program is going to be named. We are going to have four very specific choices for them. The first one will be a virtual option. I think if we've learned anything from the pandemic. Is the value, um, and the easiness of doing something from a virtual perspective. So we are going to be doing that. We're working very closely with Mr. Christian and Ms. Debick, uh, to be able to do that. That will be set for May twenty-fifth in the evening at six PM. Then on May thirty-first at nine thirty, uh, AM, we'll be right here at MTI in the auditorium. And again, we'll be inviting community members, families to come and join us. That will be an opportunity for us to give just a very, very brief overview of what we want to accomplish at the Early Learning Academy. Our areas of emphasis, the students that we're going to serve. So that that way they can make a very informed decision of, uh, maybe their suggestion for the naming of the school. Then we are working in close conjunction. They are a part of our committee work, working closely with the Early Learning Coalition. So we're going to host an event at their facility on June first at six PM. And then for our community and family members who are unable to attend the virtual option, the two in-person options. Then of course, we're going to have a digital link. And we again are utilizing Ms. Debick, who is providing a platform called Thought Exchange. Uh, I will tell you the benefits of that. That link will be open from May twenty-fifth to June third. And we were test running it the other day. Couple of advantages of using this platform. That the individual gets to place their suggestion for the name. They had a hundred and twenty-five characters to be able to put their rationale or their thought process for why this name would have significance. And then for any of the possible names that are in there, they can rank in order of importance their vote. For what they believe the name choi- choice should be, whether it's their own or someone else's that has been submitted. Then from there, at the June sixteenth board work session, we will be back. And with that point, we'd like to share the top three choices that have come forth from families and community members. And their rationale for why those names chose to, uh, rose to the top. And then on June twenty-eighth, that will be a board meeting. At that meeting, you will have had the work session. You will know what the top choices are. And we will be asking you to make a decision, uh, on the recommendation that has become before you on those name choices. And we hope by the end of that evening, we have a new name for the Early Learning Academy. That is going to be located at four thousand West Anthony Road. And we are looking forward to it and excited about what the year is going to bring for us. Any questions?
Thank you, uh, Ms. Beck, Dr. Hembrook, Mr. Ayers. Uh, thank you guys for this. This is a way of making sure that the community has a full input into it. And it gives a great opportunity for it to be a community-type school. So thank you.
Chair. Yes, uh, boy, stockholders' meeting. That's what you're talking about here. Perfect model. Stockholders' meeting. Yes. And we've got a lot of stockholders. Encourage them, bring them in, give them the facility to do, uh, what they do best. And that is, uh, give us input. Thank you. Wow. Well, well, well done. Thank you Chair.
I, terrific job ladies. Thank you so, and gentlemen, I see Mr. Ayers there too. Thank you so much. Two quick questions. One is for Attorney Powers. So I know they're referencing board policy eight point five four, which obviously we are still going by those policies. I just wanted to ensure that the same process is aligned in our upcoming policy. In the, in the event that we approve policies in the middle of their timeline. Because that is possible, that we may approve a new policy for naming. I just wanna make sure that those are, are aligned.
Our newer policy is, has far fewer restrictions or directives on exactly what the publication period is and things like that. Those are not things that are governed by statute. Those are things that in the past, the board had chosen to have sets of criteria. So, um, there would be nothing additional that they would have to do. In fact, any work that they're doing now would be essentially, if they had, if they were gonna be doing this in August, they may not have to go through quite as much. But, um, regardless, it, it, there's no harm in, in the community involvement perspective, which is always useful.
Absolutely. So great. If, so, but just for future reference, you may not have had to go through all these steps. So thank you for following policy. Uh, but my second question is actually probably for Dr. Gullett without saying too much about it. With the potential possibly of a signature gift towards this, is, is that, does the naming have anything to do with that, I guess? I, and I, without saying too much, I don't know that that's actually going to happen. But then the event that it does, does that change this process at all?
Great question, Vice Chair Campbell. Uh, we don't know at this time. And so that would be a consideration we would have to make at the time if we have something official. That would come directly to the district. Um, it is possible that a donation could be made elsewhere and that would come up under a different type of agreement.
Okay. Those are my two questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you guys.
For being here all day. Thank you so much for doing all your work on your cellphones as adults do.
Any public comment from all these people that are sitting out here?
They've all left.
Let the masses speak.
Thank you. There've been, uh, let's move forward. Um, Florida School Boards Association Board Membership. All of you should have received a copy of our, our board membership to the Florida School Boards Association. And, um, what we pay, um, annually. We're paying, um, twenty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars. To the Florida School Boards Association for a membership. Which equates to four thousand, four hundred seventy-nine dollars per person. So we are, we're gonna be moving forward. We just got our invoice for this. We're gonna continue to move forward unless there's a particular member or members of this board that do not wish to continue to be a member of the Florida School Boards Association.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Um, I'd like just make comment on it. Uh, I, I appreciate the way this is being brought forward. It's, it's excellent. So that people understand, uh, the organizations and it's like travel. Understand how, how the board gets informed and how things, how things take place on a, on a real basis. I would like to make, um, I'd like to make a suggestion, uh, if, if you will, a mini protest, uh, just based on our policy. Uh, I personally, uh, travel, uh, with a, what I call age assist. It is a person who takes notes for me and, uh, can hear and follow. And, and handle things that I might, uh, want to. and, and handle things that I might want assistance for. And our, I'd like to, I, I have made a protest to the School Board Association that, because I, I had my age assist, a person sent from a recent meeting we had up in Tallahassee. And I believe that to be absolutely improper. Be about like, I don't want to be dramatic here, but it's about like taking a wheelchair away from a quadriplegic. It just doesn't get it. And so, I would like them to abide by just standard rules of age, sex, race, no discrimination. If, if, with that said, I believe that their value outweighs a anecdotal type issue like that. And so, I'm in favor of it. However, they gotta stay with the times, and this is 2022. So, with that said, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. Any other comments from the Board? So, I guess we have with those that are here consensus that we will continue with our membership with the Florida School Boards Association, with all five members of these Board. However, any Board Member can invoke their right to not be a member of the Florida School Boards Association. Any public comment? All right, they're being done. Board comments that concern Ms. Prestipino, any comments? Attorney Powers?
I have none.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, just briefly to say thank you all for supporting our teachers during National Teacher Appreciation Week and always.
Thank you. Mr. Browning.
Thank you, and I apologize for having comments at this late in the day, but I'll, I'll be, this is so important. And let me pass these around if I may. We discussed this last week and, and almost, almost every meeting since I came on the Board, and I've been involved in this, this is Stanton Wearsdale for the record. And the, I've, I've got a solution. Actually, had a video, but I was technically unable to, 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 to get it, go over the airways. There are some issues involved and, and some of, some of them are my incompetence when it comes to the latest in technology. However, let's just go to Stanton Wearsdale, we've got some pictures here. And the key to Stanton Wearsdale is, and, and why it involves the school system, is in 20, or in 1956, we built a school. We built it in a community that was established in 1904. It was under a survey, it was established, it was well-established, and that's why we put the school there in 1956. Now, there's a, there's a statute that's real germane to this. Anybody can write it down or just be aware of it, it's 95361. And this is the right-of-way statute, and this is about roads, walk-in, that type of thing. There's a lot of angles to this, but they all come back to a bogus claim by someone in the school district that the road that existed for 50 years prior to us putting the school in was not truly a road. Okay, it was a road, it was there, it was maintained. And another really important thing is it had a yellow si- a, a green sign. A green sign means that it is handled as a county maintenance road. Okay, the, if we flip forward, we'll just look at this first picture. These are not in the perfect order, but that's okay, that's okay. This first picture is 134th, that's where everything from the east comes from to our school. And it comes up 167th and 166th. Now, these are short little roads about the size of a long driveway, but they're important roads. And they, they have been, especially the one that comes directly to the school, to the front of the school and to the side of the school, 167th. Now, it did get an extra little name because it went, when we did a, an adjustment for 911, we did some of that changing a few years back, and it did get an additional number to it because it goes, at that point, it goes north-south. Now, what is the issue? The bogus claim, now this is bogus, a bogus claim that the road didn't exist. And what a road, how a road exists in, in Florida is under 95361, and that is, it, it gets maintained. And if it's maintained, it doesn't even, after four years, doesn't even matter. This is after 50 years. Okay, so, we used it, and we need to tell the County Commission this, we need to tell the world this. We used it for 50 years, from, from when we moved in, in 1956. We used it for 50 years. Everything that went into that school, other than a student and faculty, went through, went down that road and into a gate. Now, if you'll flip back about one, two, three, yeah, to the last page. Just go to the last page, the top, on the last page, top image, that gate, everything that ever went into that school went down that community road for 50 years. And it was maintained, it had a green sign, it was maintained by the county. But it had this bogus claim on it, and it was like a bad rumor. And it gave permission, or it just clouded things, well, I don't know, is that really a road? And that came from the school system. And it, it got so profound as to not even be able to have a stop sign there in 2022, like right now. Now, just to show how, okay, so a kid's walking along, a student skipping along, heading into school 50 feet away, the car coming has no clue that, that they, they should stop. No clue, not even the remote clue that you have at the bo- at the, at the road that we all live on. Wherever you are, I'll just tell you, you have one. We could take one from anybody's home and put it in down here at the school and then figure it out at their home. In other words, it's critical across the state of Florida that, that we're consistent. Now, the sign on the, the previous page shows the cafeteria deliveries, extended daily entrance. Everything went down that road, that home right there, Gloria Bozier's home. That home is on the road, it's on the rolls, it's in the tax, it's assessed. It's a, as legitimate as any home in Marion County, and it has a road. This rumor killed that. So, I don't know, I, I come up with many, many ways to address this. Sometimes we go into stormwater, sometimes we go into unitary status. Each one of these arguments is valid, valid because it gives, it'll give finally the authorities to realize that it was a bogus claim. And I'll tell you why they needed to have this bogus claim. It's because there was no real decent way to handle stormwater coming off the school. And it went right straight down, downhill, right into that community. And they couldn't do it if they didn't say they owned it. I guess that's what they were thinking, I don't know, but it was a very bogus move. And it's one of these things that once it gets started, it has momentum, it's like a, somebody's reputation. It's hard to clean it up. So, we have to, as a Board, say specifically that we used it for 50 years, that it existed 50 years before we got there.
We, Dr., Mr. Browning, I need to stop you there to clarify. First of all, bogus claim or not, I, I don't really understand that line of thinking. Let me tell you this, however.
Yes, please.
Statute speaks to local and county governments, not, not School Board. It, it specifically requires that the road had been used for four years by either a county or if it's a non-governmental entity, for seven years. After which time, the residents there can take that to the county, and I believe they have. I believe this has been introduced to the county, the county disagrees that it has anything.
No, sir, no, sir, that isn't correct.
Okay, I, I thought that in conversations that I had had with you, you'd indicated that on multiple occasions, it's been brought before the county all the way up to the point of funding.
We ha- we have brought it, we have brought it multiple times. The, the key there, that what you're saying is, see, there, there, there's some issues. The county will defer to this School Board. The, the Board.
Says, says who? That, that does not appear anywhere in this.
It, no, it is not law, that is the fact, and the fact that since it went in, since this school went in, the, the road was public. It had a green sign. It was maintained. Okay, so, everything was functioning at that point, and it was established a road, and it can't go backwards. It isn't incumbent on the people to fix it or not fix it. Once it's set under 95361, that's it, it belongs to the public.
I'm just gonna reiterate my concerns that the School Board does not have any standing in this matter, and that it is something that if the Board wishes to direct me to a specific research task in order to try to accomplish something else, everything that I have looked at, including this statute, the hazardous walk-in zones, everything else I've, I've looked at, done everything that I could to ensure that we have met whatever requirements we have. And everything seems to go back to, if there is an issue at all, it is an issue which the county may resolve or may, it may be necessary for the county to resolve. They may or may not have the standing authority or responsibility to do so. But any degree to which we would as a School Board is a tiny subset of that. So, I, I, I don't, I don't wish to interrupt your comments at all, except to say that we've, as you indicated, we've discussed this at every meeting for many, many, many meetings.
Yes.
And I've, I think, tried to help in any way that I can, understand the nature of everything that's involved. You and I have disagreed regarding unitary status and disagreed regarding the hazardous walk-in condition. I believe that on this, I don't agree with your legal analysis.
Okay.
So, the legal analysis to the Board is gonna be independent of what your legal analysis is here, and that's certainly fine for you to argue that to them, but I.
I will, sir, let me, let me ask you to hold your opinion until I conclude here.
Understood.
Making this point is a big point, everybody. Here's what's going on. We built the school, when I say we, I'm, I'm saying the district. The district built the school. The district laid claim to that road that existed prior 50 years. It is the road, and the district laid claim. Now, let me just go on and let me, let me make this point because it's critical to how we got here.
I won't interrupt you again.
No, no, I, I was, I was focusing that on.
No, and that's fine, I did want to ask one quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Talking southeast 167th Lane, is that what we're talking about? I, I'm try, I'm, I'm.
Yes, it's 167th Lane, but as it, under the new, you're going from 1904, so under the new rules, as you turn down the side.
I mean, I have the Google map right here, I just want to make sure we're talking about southeast 167th Lane. It's, it's where Garden of Prayer Church is.
Yes, yes, that's it.
This is what I want to.
And right as soon as it turns, it changes. This one will show it as, there's a different sign right there, it, it gets people confused.
Okay.
Okay, so, but that is the road, yes. Now, now, why is there no stop sign, for example? Why is there, it's because the Board, the School District said that's our property. Yes.
So, are you talking about the stop sign?
Your mic, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
It's in your picture, yes. And it's the.
Stop sign that.
Yes, sir, that's not there. Yes, sir.
In this, in this curve?
Yes, it's the stop sign right there.
Down here.
Yes, that's not there. That's the road.
Coming off the dirt road.
It, it's the road.
Correct, that's the road there.
And so, as you're driving in right here.
You're saying there should be a stop sign?
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, there isn't every road, no.
So, who's responsible for that?
Well, well, great question, now.
That would be my question.
Hang with me, the reason, the reason there isn't one is because we, as a School District, 50 years ago, 65 years ago, said it's our property. We took over the road. And at that point, the county quit talking about it because it was our road. But it wasn't our road, that was a bogus claim that just got out there. And I'm, I'm trying to get to the genesis of this, I'm not blaming anybody. And we gotta bust through this, we gotta write a letter that, that states it exactly the way it is. And that is, the road existed from 1904 for those, those homes. And then, we came and put a school, and we used the road for 50 years. Yes, sir.
Maintains that road.
This, the county maintained it, that's the significance of the green sign. The county maintained the road for all that time, and they waived this bogus claim while we were using it. But in 2003-ish, we got new things happening down there at Stanton, and we went around from the western side, put a padlock on that gate. And at that point, everything stopped. You can see, everything stopped, they got on a pickup truck, took the sign off, took off the green maintain sign and put on a white, uh, uh, private road sign, and it's not a private road. And it all revolves around us putting the school there, because we're very powerful as it comes to that neighborhood. I mean, the school is the big thing. And so, if we just say, yes, we put the school there, yes, the road existed 50 years before, yes, the road existed while we had it for 50 years, the right-of-way 361, the whole thing. Yes, 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 then, everybody at the county is clean. And yes, we have raised money through DOT, and it was used not for that area because it was confused. You couldn't, it, it actually, there is a quitclaim deed that will just never get filed. That's how goofy this thing is. A quitclaim deed that goes across the road, they used for a long time, and they just imposed this on these people. Okay, I, I'm just saying, if we can just clean ourselves from it, I told the Commission, I would have this conversation with the Board. And if, if we can get to the point, we use the road, it is a road, we have no interest in denying these people the right to that being a road, getting a stop sign. We have no interest in not having signs down there for safety for our students. We have buses, every single bus that leaves that school drives in front of a road that has traffic running down it with no stop sign. You could go right into a bus, you could go, you know, at, at any level. There's no advantage to perpetuating the 65-year problem. And I have no interest in this other than, I'm aware of it, it's a major issue that's there for nobody's benefit. There is no benefit to this long-term, nonsensical bogus claim that it's not a road. Because it is a road and has been a road.
Mr. Browning, the people that stay on that dirt road, because that dirt road goes all the way back around.
We're Garden of Prayer churches.
That's right, that's right, it's about 2,000 feet, yes.
So, and there's, there's folk that live on that.
Yes.
Okay, have they made the claim?
Yes, sir, now, yes, absolutely.
Now, because this is my, this is my stance with this. It's clearly, it's not the road of the, of the district. The district doesn't, we don't own this road. We see where our driveway is and it goes around. Yes, that does run out into the main road, but we don't maintain the road out here.
You can see the difference in the pavement.
No, we don't, but you just made, you're the Chair, and you just made the statement. No, we don't, but you just made, you're the chair, and you just made the statement that we don't own the road. We need that in writing for the county. I'm serious, I'm serious.
That all we need is a letter. What you're asking for-
That's all.
We talked about every single meeting since you've been-
Exactly.
You want a letter from this board.
Yes, stating these issues. I'll write the letter, we'll run it through-
No, no, no.
And then, no, I'll write the letter, we'll run it through, and then we'll let this board decide it.
Attorney, what's the legality of that?
If, what I've heard you say, Mr. Browning, is that you want us stating that we have no objection to them putting a stop sign there?
Absolutely, and no, to declaring it a road. To declaring it a road.
Attorney Powers, can you get that written? And I'll sign, I'll come out to office tomorrow and sign it.
I wanna read it, I wanna read it, because it's got to be correct.
You just said what it needs to say, Mr. Browning. You said that we have no claim-
We have no claim.
On that road.
And we-
And did you choose to put a stop sign there on their county?
No, no, don't, don't go there. That's okay, that's their deal, that's their deal. But we also, as a district now, we also require safety at our schools. We do, and we'll have an input. The superintendent has their statutes.
But that's not our school.
Pardon me?
That's not our school. This is our school, so you're talking about the road. We cannot predicate or dictate to the county about their road. If they, if they know that it's not our road, and it's their responsibility to maintain it, then they ought to know any safety devices that that road needs.
Yes, that'll be the withholding of services. That's a different issue. But what we can do is we can say that, for example, we did make the claim that it was a school property. We have put in, I guess we've put it in, we've asked for it for some time, a quitclaim deed so that there be no doubt. Because see, when they go to digging into these things, they say, "Well, that's the school property."
Who's "we"? I'm sorry, what's the quitclaim deed?
I was about to say, who is "we"?
It's the school district, the school district-
The school district has a quitclaim deed on this property.
Has a, has failed to put it forward that they do not own the road. But they do have a survey that went, just went across, because at one point, this is important, they didn't have any place to put their stormwater, and they had to put it over the road. And that was the only way they could do it. That was, that's just sort of a motivation, but we don't even have to go there. The point is, we've got a, we've got a road, we've got a community. The community has rights. We can't get past, we can't get to them getting their rights until we state that, yes, we used it as a county road for fifty years. We did, I mean, it's just history. We did it. There's nothing tricky about that at all. We did it. That's the deal, that's the reason for the sign. It shows, all, all, everything went that, down that road. So, there's nothing tricky there. Number two, that the road existed before we got there, nineteen oh four to fifty-six, that's fifty-two years, and that it has not been maintained beside the school. It has not been maintained for the last, golly, let's say twenty years. It may be nineteen, it may be twenty-two, I don't know, in that neighborhood. And we'll get, remove the cloud. That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for. We remove the cloud that is causing this to go on. And that way, see, we've, we have a filed survey originally in nineteen fifty-six, and it goes right over that road. They didn't pay any attention to it at the time. They just didn't pay attention to it. They just blew on through it. And nobody was gonna stop them because they were using the road. Now, they've quit us, we, we, I'm sorry, I'm using pronouns, and I shouldn't do that. Please correct me. So, now the district must state, because the only reason we have this school is for the benefit of this community, this neighborhood. We put it there for a reason. And let's just do the right thing. Let's end all clouded communication. And at that point, we can go, we have a community over there, we have the Community Empowerment Project. We can go to it, I get, get Ms. Sarah Gavin right up. We can just go there, we could fill the whole, the whole room with people. And boom, we would have a stop sign, we would have, there'd be no reason not to because it clearly would qualify as a road in the state of Florida. Now, this may sound crazy that I'm going on and on about it, but it's that simple. There is a resistance to fixing this thing. And that's what causes it to go sixty-five years. All of you all, there's no reason not to go to the mat trying to make this, solve this problem sixty-five years later.
So, have they approached the county commissioner about it?
Yes, yes. They throw it back on the school board immediately. I mean, I could, I could give you-
How long ago was-
Oh, twenty years. I've been involved in it twenty years.
Right, but I'm just saying that, and there's the same residents on this road, and they've recently gone-
Three generations, yes, absolutely. I could get Hattie-
No, 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 I understand. I'm just asking, they've recently made petition to the county?
Yes, absolutely, yes. We went down, here's what we did. We went through HUD. Okay, we had a congressman out there, we had Bex, we had everybody, okay. We went through HUD. We did the exact HUD routine. We declared that it was minority. And we really don't even have to go there, but it was minority. It was poor. It was, it qualified in every regard, and we were awarded the funds. Now, they're at a point where they're having survey problems. Well, I kinda know what the survey problems are. That's this district. You guys aren't trying to block things with an old survey. You're not trying to do that. The road existed, just, we just say it. I'll draft a letter, give it to you. If you get approval, you know, just, let's just do the right thing.
What are you saying the letter needs to say?
The letter should say that the road existed ahead of time. That qualifies it.
That has what legal relevance?
It has legal relevance of ninety-five, three, six, one. That it existed?
That it existed prior has no legal relevance under ninety-five, three point three-
This is, this is a letter to our county commissioners. You let them off the hook, they got, they want to know cleanly. This is not a court of law.
I'm not their lawyer.
Well, then you don't write it, I'll write it and let the chairman sound it. Well, okay, that's fine. We'll get to a point that you will, you write it.
No, 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 sir, no, sir. I represent this entire board.
Okay, okay. Anyhow, we'll get it, we'll get it, we'll get the words so that they work. And I promise you, I have no problem having everyone on this board be copacetic with this. Just be happy. Just absolutely feel they're doing the right thing. They're creating a solution to a sixty-five-year-old problem that is gonna get solved.
What I heard you say is, we need to state that we don't own the road. We're on public record right now stating-
I know we are, I know we are.
We don't own the road.
I know it.
County commissioners, we do not own that road.
No.
Yes.
That's it.
If you want to do whatever you want-
If you wanna put a stop sign on it, put a stop sign.
All right.
You wanna pave it.
Whatever, but we don't own the road.
Now, watch this. Let me make this public statement. Our lawyer notwithstanding, this is a board member speaking. The road started in nineteen oh four. They know that. Everything is good that way. No problem so far. Nope, nobody's, nobody's in a problem. We went in in nineteen fifty-six. We said that that was our road. And now we're saying, no, it isn't, and-
Hold on, Mr.-
Well-
I can't state that-
Well, I'm just stating it.
Have you ever made a claim to that road?
Oh, no, no, we do. We have, the superintendent can give you this.
As the chair.
Can you not, superintendent?
As the chair, I think it's irresponsible for us to say that we owned that road in nineteen fifty-six or whatever, when we weren't on that board.
No, but the district was.
We're not privileged to that information. Have we used the road? I'm sure we probably used the road. As well as everybody in that community has used the road.
Yes, it's the road.
Matter of fact, I see how the fence is in the back of the school.
Yes.
We probably used the road.
Yes.
But we never owned it.
Well, we said we did.
Because if you, if you look at it from a strategic point of view, if you look at it from my vantage point, that church, I'm sure that church was back there way before that school was back there.
Absolutely, it was back there about nineteen thirteen.
Way before the school was there, so-
Absolutely.
I can't see how we ever made a claim to a road.
Well, you wouldn't think so, would you? That's why I'm saying, now, just, just hold your horses for a second. Nobody's forcing you. We'll find the documents, Superintendent. I need you to pull up the survey. And it's right in the records, clearly, it's in the records. And you can pull up the survey. If you can't get it, I'll get it for you. The survey that goes across the road. Now, this is, we can, we can get this solved, but we gotta state the problem. Then we say, no, even this survey, for sure, will have something written that says, no matter what.
Mr. Browning, are you indicating that there is a current, the current issue with why the county cannot put a stop sign there is because there is a cloud over the title based on a lack of a quitclaim deed? Is that what you're alleging?
Maybe, maybe. You're sort of misstating it. No, I'm saying that the road existed under ninety-five, three, six, three, six, one, that we made a, what I call, a bogus claim. And the bogus claim then, because we're such an important entity, it took-
The bogus claim that you refer to is you claim that we indicated that we owned the road?
That's correct.
Okay.
We being who?
The school board, thank you.
The school board back in nineteen fifty-six?
Pardon me?
Back in nineteen fifty-six.
Yes, I think it was nineteen eighty that the school board said, "We will do a quitclaim." Listen, this has been-
So, is there, it goes back to, that is, that has relevance only if there's a currently, currently a cloud over the title of that property that is keeping a stop sign from going in?
And it's not so much a legal cloud?
If that's the case, we can dedicate hundreds of hours of legal research time into getting into everything we need to in order to assure that there is a, that if there's a clouded title, that it's, that it's-
There is no cloud, there really is no clouded title.
Then everything that you're discussing does, I, I'm not able to determine the relevance of.
Okay, well, the relevance is the fact that there is no stop sign, that it is a dangerous situation, and it must be mitigated. The risk must be mitigated. And I'm bringing this forward as the reason that there is no stop sign, that this has gone on for sixty-five years. And so, let's just clean it up, whatever it takes. I'm happy to have further conversations with you and get you satisfied. This is less legal than purported legal. And I'll go into the way things were done in the fifties, in nineteen fifties, in a segregated situation. It was not balanced. The courts even found that.
So, to move forward with this, it's on the record.
Yes.
We don't own it.
We don't own it, no.
Legally attorney, can I say that we don't own that road?
The road that I'm looking at, that there are pictures of here, I don't think that's in question, nor has it been, so-
No, well, it has been, it has been.
I'm sorry, since nineteen fifty-six, I don't think it's been in question, so-
Let me say this, by us not owning it, we don't have a right to put up a stop sign.
No, no, and I'm not asking you to put it up. I'm not asking you to.
I'm just stating it for the record.
Yes, absolutely.
We don't have a right to put up a, a stop sign there.
Right.
County commission can do whatever they want.
Yes.
Because it's their road.
And they will.
I think that the county commission approached me as a school board lawyer and asked if whether we had any objection to a stop sign being placed here. I would not even trouble the board with that question. I would simply respond that we do not have any objection to a stop sign being placed there.
For the record, we don't have any objections to the county commission putting a stop sign on that road.
Or ownership, that it, that, we have no ownership-
I've already stated, we do not own the road.
Yeah, we have no ownership of that road, including, including old surveys in nineteen fifty-six.
Go back to something with-
Well, I'm just saying, including. If we don't, we don't.
Trying to say, I'm trying to move on from this because we don't own it. We don't own the road. We have never owned the road. And we don't have any objections to the county putting a stop sign there.
They're treating it as a road. The stop sign, just treating it as a road.
It's already a road. It's on the map, it's already a road.
Under a cloud.
And just-
And I'll, I'll, I'll get the survey. Excuse me a second. I'll get the survey, and I'll bring that in.
When you say "under a cloud," I'm gonna stop you every time. And I'm gonna, and I'm gonna make sure that if any board member uses the term in referring to real property, "under a cloud," that we are clarifying that it is, there is not a cloud of title. If there is a cloud of title, it's a separate issue. But using the term "under a cloud," I, we've got to, under a cloud of past racism, under a cloud of unitary sta- I don't know what you're referring to, but when you're talking about real property, there's a specific meaning that we have to stop right there and say, if, if there's a cloud on title, or there's, that, that's a different issue. So, I certainly get where you're coming from.
Well, let me use the term, as a non-board member, let me use the term, a board, a legal board member, I'm not a lawyer. I'm using the term "cloud" in confusion. And that confusion needs to be cleared up. Like on the unitary status. Few people even understand unitary status. However, for us, back then, when I first started on this, was twenty million dollar issue on federal funding. Now, it's probably closer to forty million dollars in federal funding. And what, we can go to whatever level. It's, it is sixty-five years this thing has inertia. Sixty-five years. And we can clean it up, and we will. And I will help with that survey. I'll, I'll get it if the superintendent has it, fine, or we'll just get to it. And that will eliminate it for all time. We can take whatever legal steps we have to make sure that this never happens five years from now.
I'm concerned, my concern, my concern, board members and attorney, superintendent, is that we're, we're moving too far over into something that has nothing to do-
We're not the party, if I may, we're not the party that needs to take action on this issue.
Right.
Okay? If there is a party which, I mean, we've looked at this as to whether there's any unsafe and hazardous walking condition going to the school. We've looked at this under, is there some safety of our students issue that we need to be aware of, or, and I, those, legally, I've seen nothing that, that has succeeded that it would indicate that we have some issue there. If there is a, I, I also am not entirely clear on what the end ask is, is, is a stop sign there cures everything, or is it also sidewalks and improved drainage and?
Paved road.
Paved roads. I, I don't know exactly what's being required or requested.
Those, those things are outside of our purview.
What I am able to state is that, that to the degree that we have any, you, you indicated that we just, we, we just, it's very, very simple, you said. We need to let someone know that we're not gonna stand in the way of them putting up a stop sign. If that's the issue, I can resolve that quickly. We will not stand in the way.
Not the stop sign, not the stop sign.
Okay.
The, the integrity of a road.
These things have a way of growing, so I don't wanna, I like things tight.
The integrity of the road, that the road, we have no claim to that road, nor does our survey, because it exists. Now, I'll just bring it, we'll have another meeting a week from now, and we'll just address it. I'll bring that forward. And so, we can get to those things. I want everybody to be satisfied, and I want this community to go on as though this, in the future, it, we do not have the problems we've had in the past, and the problems are manifest by the fact that there's been zero services here. And that is the holdup. And if we don't resolve this cleanly and clearly, then it will likely continue on precedent.
You say there's no services, what do you mean, no services?
No services. Uh, the services here.
What do you mean, no services?
Uh, services mean, meaning trimming the trees, uh, continuing to work on the right of way, now that we've gone around, the, the school district has gone around to the west side of the building with all access. They've stopped all, all, um, uh, all services. Sidewalks, we raised the funds, this, and the.
You mean, so you, when you say services, you're talking about maintenance of that?
Anything that happens from a county.
That way.
Even stop signs. Yeah, even a sign that says children crossing, even a sign that says school, even a sign, anything that we normally have that gives an indication to us, to a driver, that there is a school there, that is a place where you stop your car, because you're entering a road where a bus is coming, for example. Those are the kind of things that are, the services that are not being brought.
Attorney Powers, let me ask a question, Mr. Browning.
Yes.
Attorney Powers, with, there, there, that is a residential community back there.
Yes.
I've drove that road several times.
Yes.
Um, they have electric utilities and, of the such back there. So, those electric companies are able to go back through there, I'm sure, and I'm looking at the tree road, surely is that the responsibility of those to maintain their lines and all that kinda stuff like that?
Even fiber optics.
Uh, right, I mean, they would have easements in order to be able to maintain all that as well. And, and I can expand to say that, that we don't, we would also, I would feel comfortable indicating to the county commission that they, that we also have no objection to them, providing or continuing tree trimming, sidewalk services, school crossing signs, anything else that they wanna do for maintenance and services in that area. We don't have any objection, but we also, we can't obligate them to do that.
If you get a letter stating that we don't have any objections to them doing those things, and that we do not own that property, I don't have a, I don't have an issue board sign that letter. But, but that's, but I'm not gonna go to this extent of going back to nineteen fifty-six, because that's beyond our purview as a board member.
And, and I would want to very clearly specify that, that the, the property that we're talking about, that we don't own that, the road that's being referenced in these photographs here, um, you know, as opposed to, for example, you know, a, a subdriveway that connects to that road or something like that. I mean, then that, that is obviously something that's our property, but things that occur with on our, our actual property boundaries, you know, certainly, we're not giving that up.
No, that's exactly right. Now, he just touched it, uh, chairman, uh, bear with me. He just touched it. If you would go to this picture right here, and I'll just show you something.
I'm looking at the overhead as well.
All right, all right. When you, when you, he just used the term "our survey." I want you to pull the survey for that building.
Property boundaries.
Yes, property boundaries for that building, and you'll see that they extend over the road, uh, well, our claim. And it's been quitclaimed or whatever it's been, it's, that's all hearsay on my, you know, from what I've heard. And just sort, I consider it just pandering, it, it just was, it, it just was never followed up. And that's why we have no stops, and it's why these things exist. So, if, if we can, if you will reference our footprint, what we claim to be our footprint.
Well, that, we can, we can determine that within the micrometer. I mean, we can determine exactly.
Yes, that's what I wanna see, and, and referenced in the letter, and then we're home free. That way, the county and the county engineers know we are absolutely, uh, putting no claim on that easement or the road.
Yes, sir. With GIS mapping, we can, and, and with the survey of the actual building that was done most recently, that would be what we use, not something going back to nineteen fifty-six.
Oh, when, whenever, i- i- as long as you show an actual survey, and that's the claim, anything prior to that is not an issue. And the reason these people get beat up down there is a nineteen, eighteen sixty railroad survey that they've got down now, when they wanna block water, they can block water on that eighteen sixty survey, just because they say they can. Uh, they, uh, pardon me for the pronoun, they, meaning, uh, anybody putting in a utility, all water goes to that community, all stormwater, from every source in the neighborhood, it all goes to that, and it's, it's channeled there. So, this is, this is a, this, this goes back, this goes back a ways. It goes back beyond segregation. It goes back, and it goes to a point where nothing could be said by this community. Nothing could be said. That's why these things exist. So, we're just, it's, it's easy in twenty twenty-two to do this.
So.
Bang, let's do it.
Can you articulate that to the county commission, um, in letter form, that we don't own the road? They can do whatever they wanna do, they can put as many signs and cut trees, we don't own it. And can you put a boundaries of our property?
Yes.
I think.
Yes.
That would.
I, I will get with Mr. Hurley, I believe, it'd be the person who I know that does, uh, that has the GIS data mapping and can tell us exactly what the most recent survey is and things like that, um.
And if you would, if you would, one of the reasons I supplied this, this picture right here.
Browning, you keep changing the.
Sir, no, I'm just, I'm just making it more articulate, sir.
You keep moving the goalposts every time.
Here it is.
Every time I give it to.
Uh, I'm, uh. Come on, come on, stick with me, let's get it all the way across the goal. Look at this, go, go here, go here, go to this picture.
I'm willing to go to the point to say that we don't own the property.
Yes, sir.
That he can do whatever they want, they can put signs or whatever.
Yes, sir.
And to give them the specifics of our property, which is the school.
Yes.
That's the end of it.
Yes, well, well, bear with me, sir. Uh, this is, you'll, you'll be proud of this when you're done. This picture right here that I'm showing you, that's done by Google, not done by me. This picture is a green sign, and that's when we own, we used the road. And it means it was maintained by the county.
I'm sorry, it, it looks to me as if, in, in, just in this picture that I'm looking at here, that the green part is on southeast one hundred thirty-fourth Avenue Road. It looks to me as if, and maybe I'm wrong here, that it's actually white. Is it green on both? Cause sometimes.
It's green on both.
Okay, because it.
It's green on both.
Pictures are a little difficult to decipher.
Yeah, it's green on both.
Uh, when we're talking Google, I'm looking at Google as well, uh, and it has it listed as southeast sixty-seventh lane, all the way, this road that we've been talking about for the last hour. Um, and it has actually what they're calling Stanton School Road, which there, is our entrance. Uh, and our address is on southeast one hundred thirty-fourth Terrace, so that's our official address. But the road in question that we do not own, I'm looking at the property appraiser, what we own and what we don't, we do not own anything on southeast one hundred sixty-seventh lane. I'm completely.
See, that's beautiful.
Comfortable in putting that in a letter, and whomever it needs to be addressed to, the school district does not lay claim to anything on southeast one hundred sixty-seventh lane.
And the county, the county knows.
It knows that.
They know that, cause the property appraisers are here.
We would go to the county to get this information.
Right, I mean, I'm on the property appraiser's website, like, we don't, uh, I, I just got an information from the property appraiser of every piece of vacant land we own, every, we're, this is not anything that we own or have any lay claim to.
And it's beautiful that it's being said. Now, the, the significance of the green sign is that it was maintained for all those years that we used it. It was green, and that's an important.
People from the church used it.
Pardon me?
That people from the church used it, that the community used it.
The public used it. It was maintained, it was maintained, that's incredibly important.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I don't wanna talk over you, but I wanted to interject, just to say, that the green sign does not indicate school board use.
No, no.
Does not indicate school board ownership, and does not indicate school board maintenance. That's all county.
That's right, that's right. My point, though, is that when the school board, you know, governments stick together. When the school board used the road, it got maintained. You can't take that away, see? And that's the beautiful, it's sort of a trap, and the trap is, it gives the commission full permission to, whoops, oh, yeah, okay, yeah, all right, oh, there is no holdup here, oh, that's absolutely good, then they can correct their records, everything is good, bang, we're home, we hit a home run.
You hear what we, what we're needing?
Yes, and I, I would disagree that we need to go digging for survey stuff, because they have that information. Uh, if you wish me to do that, I will, but what, what I, in, as far as a letter indicating that as, as to the roads themselves there, any signs they wish to put in, any tree trimming they wish to do, sidewalks, anything they wish to do for maintenance of the property that is those, on those roads, we have no objection to that.
No objection.
Correct, and, and.
And they don't need our, I mean, they don't need our permission to do it, nor they need our, it's not.
Then my question then is, if we get this letter written, and we all agree to it, and Reverend Cummings signs it as our chair, then will we move on from this conversation?
You mean, well, as long as.
I mean, I'm, I'm honestly, I'm asking this question.
Yeah, as long as the problem gets solved.
No, no, that's, that's not, that's not the answer, because once we send a letter to the county commission, there is absolutely nothing the school board can do beyond that. If we get, and I, I understand that you may want to take your public comment to berate the county commission at some point, but that's, but I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm honestly asking, Mr. Browning, cause I appreciate it, we have, we have spent a lot of time on this today to make sure we got to exactly what it was that you've been asking us for, for months. So, if we get to this letter, and we all agree to it, and our chair signs it.
Yes.
Will then we move on?
If it.
No, not an if.
If it holds the items that I'd like to see in the letter, and I'll debate those, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll be absolutely transparent.
We just stated what items we're gonna put in this letter. We're gonna put in the letter, let me, let me say it again, Attorney Powers, for the record, one more time, final time, today, state what we're putting in this letter, because we really need to move on, really. And I'm not trying to dismiss this, Mr. Browning, cause I understand your passion for this. We all understand it.
And your passion for it, and your board's passion.
Of course, we want, but I, I think it's beyond our power. So, but you just asked us specifically to say certain things that we can say, so we're gonna say those things and try to move forward. Go ahead, Attorney Powers.
Okay, um, first, let me ask, Mr. Browning, the road you're referencing that is in question, one thirty-fourth Avenue Road, correct?
Yes, that's correct. I will give you a photograph of the exact, there's a second sign that's been put up based on, based on.
This isn't getting simple, I'm asking for simple answers.
I'm trying to give them to you simple, if I was standing there, I would give it, I would read it to you, based on the new nine-one-one numbers. What she's looking at, what, uh, Vice Chair Campbell's looking at is not the latest, the latest is another sign that's been put up, uh, that would correspond, for just a, just an additional street name, so for you to be accurate, I will supply that to you.
How about if I stated in the letter that the unpaved, ungraded dirt roads surrounding Stanton Weersdale that are not owned by the school board?
Nor maintained.
Nor maintained by the school board.
That are, that are listed, I mean.
That should be it.
Yeah.
If the school board has no objection to the county doing whatever maintenance, tree trimming, sidewalks, crossing signs, that it may choose to do, nor does the school board obligate the county to do any such maintenance.
I will work with him, and, and then if you sign it, I'll be happy. I will work with him, because there are details here, and we don't need to go on and on with the details. Fair is fair. We wanna get the mission accomplished, and it, and that will not compromise the mission at all.
But again.
It's been sixty-five years, maybe one week.
I've been sitting here for an hour, if, if there are details, what are they?
The detail would be that it was a main, county-maintained road by that sign, I mean, just included in the letter, that's a, that's an easy reference.
Hold, hold.
I, I don't wanna be making the argument that they need to be doing these.
No, no, I'm not asking you to.
Oh, from, when this conversation started, he said it would be very simple, and these were the things that you needed from us.
Yes.
We're willing to give this simple letter stating that. Now, whether they resolve it or not, is not our responsibility.
No, it isn't.
But we're not gonna continue to have these conversations about it, when we've given what you as a board member asked us, and you as a citizen of that community has asked us to give, I don't think that's fair for us to continue to debate this issue when we've done our due diligence and said, hey, we don't own it, it's not our responsibility.
And I'm not a citizen of the community, by the way, I'm not. Uh, I, I happen, it happens to be in my.
A concerned citizen of the county.
Yeah, it happens to be in my district. Uh, but if this letter is inadequate, then I'll just come back for the second follow-up letter, if there is anything they're missing. I just cannot predict the future, and I will not condemn this to another sixty-five years, if there's some simple solution. Uh, you know, I'll just help edit the letter, and then if you're not happy with it, change it. But let's get the letter right. I happen to be an expert on the subject.
Attorney Powers?
Yes, sir.
Can you write the letter that we just said that we want written?
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Anything, any other comments, Mr. Browning?
Now, I, I, just to be sure that I'm understanding, now, this is not something where I'm, I, that's the board, as the board has indicated, the contents of the letter to be here today, that's what I'm doing. I'm not, I'm not reaching out to try to kinda get more information or draft or edit or change.
We're not doing any of that stuff, we're stating we don't own it, they, they have every right to maintain it, to do whatever they wanna put, signs, we don't own any of that dirt paved road, lime rock road, or whatever it is around, surrounding that school.
All right. Um, I, I will draft that now. Um, what I would suggest then is that during my, during the next time we meet, and we have a, uh, during our, uh, comment time, I will have that letter available, rather than trying to set it as an agenda item and, and do all that, I'll have that letter available for the board to look at it. And then if the board agrees to it, then at that point, then I can move forward with the next steps. And if not, then the board can determine whether they wish to entertain further edits or not.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the two.
Attorney, do you have any comments on this, ma'am?
Um, I would just comment, thank you, Chair, that reference to Mr. Browning's, um, items that he provided to me have been provided to Attorney Powers, so I defer to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Browning, any more comments? Ms. Thore, any more comments?
All I have is, um, that I know we were trying to do this, and we're really mindful of it during our COVID-nineteen mitigation planning, when we had different staff members coming and presenting, and we had them come early. So, uh, it, I think that we just need to be mindful of that, I'm, I'm sure that we could've had the code of student conduct cellphone conversation, you know, first, so that then, um, Mr. Carlisle and Dr. Gary could get back to their schools. And, you know, I, I didn't think about it when I looked at the agenda, and for me, that was just a reminder, coming from Ms. Lauter, that as much as possible, uh, whenever we can, have, uh, topics that include school-based staff, if we can get those first on the agenda.
Looking at that, we probably should've rearranged, looking at that, we probably should've rearranged and put that one.
Yep.
Ahead of the strategic plan, because we still had community people.
That's true.
Even with the administrative briefing.
Right, right. And I know that we always try to, to do that, to honor everyone's time.
One, take it.
Triggered.
So, so for the future, we'll try and deal with the community folk first, and I know Dr. Gullis is getting it, she, she was working. Deal with our community folk first, and any school-based staff, and then we'll deal with the district staff, cause they have the ability to be here. So, that'll be the protocol from here on.
Yep, that's fair, and, and any other comments that I was gonna make, I'll, I'll reserve till our board meeting, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I was gonna say a similar thing to what Ms. Thore just said, in a recent city council meeting where I was in attendance, um, I, I don't know if we would ever want to adjust a bit the way we, we do items like that, for example, let's say, student code of conduct, the presentation is made, and then we have public comment on it, and then it comes back to the board for our comments. Um, obviously, there are questions that are asked and things of staff, if that's necessary, but I wonder if public comment can actually be placed in a little different position, just, um, obviously, we did today, and we had Ms. Lauter come up before we had all finished our comments on that, um, but I'm just, moving forward, if that's something, I just was watching how city council did it, and they essentially have all the commentary out there happen, and then they bring it to the board. And so, I don't know, that's, yeah, just a, just a thought on that. The only other things I had, um, I didn't mean to leave out transportation today, when I was talking about them as strategic, um, priority number four. Uh, I was talking about all the different little elements in there, and so Ms. Thore does such a good job, I wanted to make sure I, I gave her a little shout out there. Uh, and bringing it back around to ninety-three percent, uh, Ms. Thore, yeah, absolutely, that's a lot of improvement that we've seen, and I think that our parents and our students are, are seeing that as well. are, are seeing that as well. Um, the only other thing that I wanted to say was Happy Teacher Appreciation Week again, and today was the national, or today is the National Day of Prayer, and that's why, I know Ms. Thor and I were this morning at the county's event, and that's why I have this ribbon on, and, and the sticker that says, "I prayed." So, um, if, if there's anyone still watching this today, please honor this as to the National Day of Prayer in our nation. And I know there is an event happening this evening at six PM on Citizen, Citizen Circle, uh, also honoring that National Day of Prayer. So, that's all I wanted to mention.
Thank you, thank you. Um, yes, ma'am.
I really apologize here. I just wanted to make sure that every board member is aware that on Monday, May ninth, starting at one-thirty, uh, the Board of County Commissioners are having their workshop on growth and development projects.
Thank you.
So, that is, uh, Monday, May ninth, at the Board of County Commission, and it starts at one-thirty.
I'm going to pass out two things, and we're going to deal with these, and then we're, we're going down the road. You just pass that down. The first thing you guys should, should receive is the City of Ocala Police Department. This is our invoice for, um, officers, what we are currently paying for our officers.
Whoa. You all right?
I'm fine.
Excuse us a moment here.
A chair got away from me.
We almost had a, we almost had an issue.
Yeah. Um, this is what we currently pay, um, staff. I just want to make sure that we want to.
For our board meetings and work sessions.
Right, for our board meetings and work sessions. We pay, uh, it's fifty dollars an hour for that special duty. Um, and I need to know if we plan to continue with, with this as well.
Personally, Chair, I don't see any reason for it. I mean, I appreciate you for being here, thank you so much. Uh, but you would be getting paid if you were off somewhere else, too. So, I mean, it's really, uh, uh, so, I mean, I, I, I personally do not have a, a reason for us to continue, uh, with this. We do have our own.
I do want to thank officers, um, was it Birdeland and Matthews, for being here today as well, for.
Yes, thank you.
Stick, stay in the course. Um, we've had, because, we had it because of some things that happened. We know why. If it's necessary, do we need to, uh, continue it now? Do we need to do it as, as needed basis? How do you guys feel? Um, I just want us to be safe, my concern.
I think we're safe, Chair, and I, personally, I think, just for the record, we have way too much security, way too much. It almost gives the message that we have money to burn. Uh, I don't want to get into security, uh, as a discussion item, uh, other than to say we have way too much. Let, let that, you know, uh, fall where it falls. But I like what the city, uh, what the county does. They have a, a, a contingency that does screening. Boom, they just nail it, they nail it, and, and I've asked for a report, I should be getting that soon, as to what the cost is of that. Uh, I, you know, I'm all about dollars, and I'm about security. Uh, I think from a military point of view, boom, we have security in our, for our nation, we have security for our state, we have security for our city and for this situation, and there's no reason to get, um, uh, to, to exaggerate things to a point.
Thank you. We, um.
Or it's, or it's just too expensive.
As you guys all know, I'm, I'm law enforcement, so, um, I, I observe the city's procedures, I observe the county's procedures. The city does have armed security. You must walk through, you must walk through, uh, a metal detector, and you have to walk through individually, and they have armed security, um, at the door, and they have armed security, as well as police, in the, uh, council chambers. Council, city, uh, County Commission also has security, and you have to walk through. Their security is a little bit different, um, than ours. I think the climate, there is a national climate that school boards are kind of, uh, the easy targets to come after, and we, we see that nationally. And so, um, up until that point, a few months ago, we only had, um, Mr. McFadden, who's, uh, who is a law enforcement officer, and his staff, who are either retired law enforcement officers, um, trying to handle coming in, this is a large building, it's a large facility, and, um, with many interests and extras, exit points. So, I think that was the reasoning behind having the security here, the extra security here. Uh, we can never be too safe. It's, it's always after something happens, and you say, dang, we should have had somebody here. So, but I want to hear what you all have to say. I heard you, Mr. Browning.
And fair uncertainty and doubt is not the key. Uh, I, I, I'm, I referenced, I, I, I heard you speak to the issue that was a city council, I think it was, or a, a school board, ten years ago. That was a cap gun, and it was like, I think it was twelve years ago. Uh, it was blank.
First you got shot?
No, 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 I, you need to check. Uh, you need to check that. Uh, I've been up through Tallahassee on that one. I said, what, what in the world took place? So, take a look at it, and the, the point is, if something happened at a seven-eleven, twelve years ago, uh, and, and somebody had a, uh, had some blanks, or whatever, whatever, whatever took place, we don't go on forever on that level of fear, uncertainty, and doubt. Uh, we just don't do it. And my reference to the, the, the County Commission, that I'm saying, that is a contracted company that comes in, and they're out of Jacksonville, and I would like to, as they were saying today, piggyback on some of that thinking. I'd like to look at those dollars. Uh, tho, these are the kind of things, we need money to run this operation, and we need to be mindful of what we spend where.
Let me, for the record.
Yes.
Because it was not a cap gun, it was Panama City School Board shooting in Panama City, in, in attacking this grown-up individual, fired four shots at six Bay District School Board members, but missed them all, including the superintendent.
Had a nine-millimeter Smith and Wesson.
Yeah, so it wasn't a cap gun. It wasn't a cap gun. So, I'm not sure.
It was blanks, it was blanks, I mean, just, maybe that reporter doesn't know, but, but look at it different, for the record.
I'm not sure.
For the record.
I have to go by police reports that I saw at that time. So.
I'm, I'm.
Every police report. Every police report that I saw said that they were not blanks, they were bullets that were actually fired at people.
Well, take a look at it, it's a long time ago.
So, um, it.
The guy died, he committed suicide, so I don't think they were blanks.
Exactly, so.
That wasn't, I don't believe that was the case.
Well, anyway, we're not going to, so, Ms. Thor, how do you, Ms. Thor, Ms. Campbell, how do you feel about continuation of, um, I think I heard you, Ms. Ms. Campbell, Ms. Thor?
I personally feel very safe and, and protected by the folks that we have. Um, my only ask would be to make sure that there's more than one of our people around, because it's really not fair if a situation happens for, that's just not best practice when it comes to law enforcement. I don't know a whole ton about best practice in law enforcement, but I, I know that that's one, for them not to be alone. So, that would be my only ask there, but personally, myself, I'm fine.
Okay, so, I guess we'll go to an as-needed basis, when we feel that we need, um, additional, um, police officers, we'll do that, and if not, um, we'll go with our own security. We're agreement?
Right, and, and I would just state that going with our own security also means that, uh, Mr. McFadden is a sworn law enforcement officer with arrest powers, and has the ability to carry a firearm, as we discussed under his job title, um, and as the head of the school safety department, and is absolutely within his authority to act as any other law enforcement officer would. Um, however, in those instances in which it may be necessary, having, um, additional law enforcement officers respond to the scene would be something that would still be appropriate.
Correct, correct. So, that is the understanding. Mr. Mr. McFadden does have the authority to arrest, and to temporarily detain until other law enforcement gets here. Um, he does have that right. He is a sworn law enforcement officer.
And I think, uh, Chair, if I may, uh, I believe that, that that requirement was necessary from a, from a safe schools funding point of view, that we had that position. I would, I, I'm, I'm very happy to always fund like the commission. I just, I see our situation very much like the commission's. If we have someone, uh, on premise, excellent. If we don't, then I'm happy to have, uh, SRO-type officer, uh, that's always been at the commission. There's always been one. Uh, and we could have that or not. Uh, there, there may come a point when we don't have to have a safe, uh, uh, safe schools, we don't have that requirement in order to receive funding, uh, to have a, uh, a police chief on, uh, as stated in the statute now, a police chief on site, uh, or in the department.
Thank you. The second, the second item I want to bring forth to you guys is, and I actually intended to bring it forth last Tuesday in our board meeting, but we had so many different things. On last Monday, um, I actually had a meeting with the mayor, uh, Mayor, um, the Honorable Louis Irazari Pabon of, um, Puerto Rico, Ponce, Puerto Rico, and his delegation, they came here to the school, uh, we met, he met with myself, um, the Chief Financial Officer, and Ms., um, Martinez Lopez, who kind of translated for us in, in the area, and his delegation. Um, because of how the system is, the educational system is in Puerto Rico, he gave us the dynamics, and he gave a request. The request was that, um, those items of our district, this goes back to disposable property and tangible property, those items that we're getting ready to throw away or getting ready to dispose of, they wanted those items, whether they're being office chairs, whether they're being old textbooks, whether they're being, uh, curriculum, technology things, they wanted us to donate those items to their school district, um, at no cost to us, at no cost to us, meaning that they will transport them from us to Puerto Rico. Um, I reached out to the Chief Financial Officer to find out how this is done, if this is possible. Um, apparently, from my, from my understanding, Superintendent, as long as it's from one, uh, going to like another entity, public governmental entity, we could do that. So, I bring you the letter, because I told them that they need to be officially requested of us, and the things that they wanted, and that we would not incur a cost, um, for these items if we were to give them to them. So, this is the letter that you guys have, um, with their request. I'm hoping that we can make a cal, the consensus and bless this, this, uh, city, um, the school district with some items that we are no longer, he said if, we say they're obsolete, he said there's, they can get, they can figure out something to do with them. So, um, and that kind of goes back to you, Mr. Browning, some of the things that you've mentioned, when we were going through that, this, that, that disposition of tangible property list.
Yes, sir, uh, the, and, and the, the stewardship of the money, uh, is critical. We need money in this organization. I would like to see them to step up, if they wanted to, uh, perhaps make a bid or something, if, it, uh, I, I, I see that as a goldmine nationally, uh, or internationally even. Uh, we have paid for those items, we have them, uh, they can be used even in instructional s, uh, settings. Uh, there's a company in Orlando, uh, that I'm familiar with, that is a highly successful company, just based on these, uh, items like this. Educationally, whether we do it or someone else does it, you can take things apart, you got to be able to break them, to take them apart, and these are the kind of things that we have, and it's worth, it's worth money, it's worth a lot of money, and we're hurting for money in this district. I want to maximize our, this is not a charity event, uh, this is a situation where I want to maximize, uh, our, uh, the positives, the, the, the asset side of our ledger. Uh, once we buy it, we're stewards of it. No, I don't want to give it away, uh, unless these are, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Browning.
Some little charity event.
Ms. Thor?
This is a, this is the first I'm seeing this, and, um, I am a little bit mystified that they would be willing to pay for shipping on technology from nineteen ninety-six that's not compatible. Um, you know, it, anybody that is in need is someone that I want to try to, to help. Um, however, at the same time, I, I must say that if, it's been brought up enough times now, where if there was market and, I'll just keep it short. I would like to think that our, our department would be cannibalizing and using any pieces that, that can, we can still use for our benefit of the school system, and then anything that's left over that we're simply going to, you know, dispose of anyway. If it can help Puerto Rico, then.
That's what they're asking for.
Yeah, then I'm all for it.
Ms. Campbell?
Um, yeah, I, I, I'm kind of in between the two positions that we've heard so far, honestly. Uh, my first thought was that absolutely, let's, you know, the generosity, let's, if it's stuff that we know we can't use, stuff we know we're not going to use to break apart and put back together, stuff that is just going to the landfill, for lack of a better term, then absolutely, if someone else wants to take it at no cost to us, then let's do it. Uh, but I also am of the mindset that it is, uh, it's tangible property that, that our taxpayers have paid for, and should, what should we do with it? And my, my assumption is with Puerto Rico being a United States territory, that they should have had the ability to apply for ESER funds, too. So, uh, you know, all of the different grants from the federal government that we've been able, maybe not, but I'm, I'm, maybe not, I, I don't know, they are not able to? Okay, I, I didn't know. Um, and, but as, um, so if they're not eligible for those kinds of, of, uh, funding opportunities, what I can tell you for certain is, we have no idea the impact that they had from these hurricanes. We have no clue what it's like to literally start over, and that's what they've been doing, um, to start over from the ground up in every one of their schools and every, and so, um, if they have not had the access and the availability of the federal grants that we have, then I think I'm leaning a little bit more towards the opportunity to offer them this, uh, gesture in those events of the, uh, equipment that we absolutely know we're not going to do anything other than dispose of them.
And, and I, I intentionally did not go into, um, they were very proud, but had to be humble to come and ask for assistance. They didn't just come to Mary, Ocala happened to be a stop that there was someone that was from their city here that's in a leadership position here in Ocala. They actually stopped to talk to Mayor Gwynne first about getting some donations from the police department, some old cars or whatever, ambulances and stuff, because of them being affected by several hurricanes.
Right.
And then, on top of that hurricane, the hurricanes, then on top of, uh, the hurricanes, the, the pandemic.
And the earthquake.
And the earthquake. That was the other part, because the earthquake was in the southern part of the country, which is where they are, where they are. And then, the government, their infrastructure is not, or distribution of, of funds from the government is not like it is here. It's completely different, even though they get some funds from the government, um, depends on who's in, who's in, who's in, in power, who gets distributed those funds. So, and I did some background search on it, uh, you guys are welcome to do the same thing, I encourage you to. Um, I encourage you to reach out to, uh, Mayor Pabon, and, um, he does have a liaison here that's in Marion County, Ocala, and I think, um, we can get the information from Ms. Martinez Lopez, um, but it's gov, it's within our policy from government, we can give it to another school district, but when I think about old curriculums that we're tossing, that we're putting in the landfill, one of the things that came out of the conversation, we just got rid of a whole bunch of old books that they could, they could have gotten, that were no benefit to us, that we were not going to make any money off of them, we just toss them. So, when you look at stuff like that, and we're talking about education, that's where I'm at with it.
Yeah, if we can help their kids.
So, um, I think Attorney Powers, I'll begin with you, um, and we'll be figuring out how to do this through, um, and I'll talk with Ms. Bosnose. I heard, we heard the concerns here, um, on how we need to move forward, and whether it needs to come before a school board vote or whatever. We'll figure out how to do that as well. Okay?
Sounds good.
I don't have any other comments, time has been far spent. Superintendent, you said you didn't have anything else. Um, Happy Teachers Appreciation Week this week. Um, we want to congratulate all of them for the job that they do, not just our teachers, our, those focus in the classroom, hands-on with those kids every day. We appreciate everything that you're doing with them, and, um, we can't say enough, uh, positive things about what you do, um, because you're shaping minds, and by shaping minds, you're shaping the future. So, thank you for what you're doing. With that being said, meeting is adjourned at two forty-seven, uh, two forty-eight.